You want to just reach in there and say, "Oh, we need one more."
One more, one more.
Come on, one more.
Karen, Liz, Tom.
They're all there. They're all talking eventually.
I know. They're killing. All right. We're calling to order the council meeting of Monday, December 11th. Can the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember DeBois. Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Fine. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Wolbach.
Here.
Eight present.
And we're going to closed session, Conference of City Attorney regarding existing litigation. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Okay, we're returning from closed session and there's no reportable action. Too much. So our first is a special order of the day, I think. Let me just find the... There we go. Yes, special order of the day, adoption of a resolution expressing appreciation to Dave Doctor for outstanding public service upon his retirement. All right. You know, I don't seem to have a copy of it. Do you have a copy of it, besides?
I don't.
I was gonna ask you to read his record. Yes, that's what I was looking for. You want to read his resolution? These are both from Annette Glankoff.
Hello, everyone. It's a great pleasure to read this resolution for Dave Doctor, whom I've known for a very long period of time and who certainly has made an enormous difference in our canopy in the city of Palo Alto of the Tall Tree. So this is expressing appreciation for outstanding public service to Dave Doctor upon his retirement. Whereas, and I'll only say whereas once, Planning Arborist Dave Doctor has conscientiously and professionally served the city and the community for 21 years, implementing tree protection and innovative design on construction projects. And he has authored the City of Palo Alto Tree Technical Manual, which has been used as a model in communities across the U.S., and I'm not surprised at that. And he has served and presented to numerous professional organizations across the U.S., establishing us as a leader in integrating nature into urban design. And Dave has established bonds of trust and cooperation with residents as well as members of the development community. Now, all this is absolutely true. He has energetically taught, mentored, and coached a generation of professionals, environmental advocates, and students. And Dave has reviewed and commented on hundreds of development projects, thereby contributing to an increase in tree canopy across the city of Palo Alto. And whereas, Dave Doctor has demonstrated a commitment to protect, preserve, and increase awareness and appreciation of our urban forest, and he will be sorely missed. Now therefore, be it resolled, the council of the City of Palo Alto hereby gratefully records and extends its sincere appreciation and acknowledges the community's appreciation to Planning Arborist Dave Doctor for 21 years of faithful and excellent service rendered to the city. Could we applaud Dave? And the mayor is going to... Not yet.
I'll take over. So, first of all, normally we just go down and present it to you, but we can't present it to you yet because we have to vote. And it could be a close vote.
Oh.
So, that's...
Seriously.
That's what we do. So if we could just vote on the board. Oh, yes. Well, so, yeah, we have... Sorry, I made a mistake. I'll move the resolution... Or Vice Mayor Niss would like to move the resolution. I will second it. And now we voted on the board, and you know what? It was unanimous. So now I have the honor to come down and present it to you. Leave it to the city manager to say. Go ahead, anyway. Thank you all. Vice Mayor Niss, Mayor Scharf, and council. It's been a privilege to be here for 21 years. And this is the exclamation mark on what community means, to have all of you stand and recognize what your values mean, how we've been implementing them, at least for 21 years. After I'm gone, there's a whole crowd that will still keep implementing those values. And to council here, you guys keep shepherding and listening to the voices, because the community values, you are the only echo chamber here, and the city manager knows that. He's shaking his head. But anyway, to me, it's been a privilege for me as a student of arboriculture, who has turned into a land use warrior at times. I really appreciate this community a lot. And I tout this community to other communities all over the nation, and this is the best place I could have ever landed to work in. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? With the privilege of the council, I would just like to add, one of the things that wasn't maybe fully expressed in the resolution is beyond Dave's technical expertise. He really is an exemplary city employee in the sense of really being like the anti-bureaucrat. I mean, it's that, you know, any kind of issue or problem that might come forward, he was always, always really willing to take it on, try to look for creative solutions. He was the kind of person we would never hear say, "That's not my job, really." So you've always had the community's best interests, and we and the staff are gonna miss you. Thank you.
We do have one public speaker, but before that, I also wanted to say, we are gonna miss you, Dave. Thank you very much. You're a legend in the community. Everyone talks about it with the trees and what a great job you do. And it's a real loss to the city. So I hope you enjoy retirement, and thanks again for all your service. And councilmember Holman must want to speak. It says Fine up here, so I...
So, just briefly, and it kind of plays off of what the city manager said, is you have so much expertise, and, you know, we all appreciate that, respect it, and rely on it. But what really makes you such an exemplary employee is really playing off what Jim said. It's that you are committed to this community. And it is how the public really has come to rely on you and trust you with your expertise and how it's applied in specific situations, and how you evaluate the different situations on their own merit. And so, you'll be greatly missed, and I'm sure you have passed on your knowledge and mentored others in the department. And thank you so much for all your years of service. Greatly appreciated.
And Martin Bernstein wants to speak. So Martin, if you want to come up and say a few words. You'll have three minutes.
So, I just wanted to commend in public Davids for your great education. I learned a lot about the trees and the value of trees. So you're a great educator. So thank you so much. Good. Thank you.
And now, we have Palo Alto's Acceptance of the Santa Clara County Healthy Cities Initiative Awards. Dr. Cody.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Niss, and members of the council. My name is Dr. Sarah Cody. I'm the Santa Clara County Health Officer and Public Health Director, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I am here to recognize the city council and staff with two awards. And they're here, and one of them is so large and heavy, I might need assistance presenting it to you. So the Healthy Cities Initiative facilitates and celebrates leadership efforts of cities to improve community health and prevent chronic diseases like overweight, obesity, and type 2 diabetes. While we are your health department and I am your health officer, we can't prevent chronic diseases and improve health of residents and well-being of residents in cities without the hard work of you all. So our partnership with cities is absolutely critical. So first, I'm pleased to present the City of Palo Alto with an exemplary award for reduced exposure to secondhand smoke. And that one... That is this one. So this award is for taking significant steps to protect residents, visitors, and workers from the harmful impacts of secondhand smoke through adoption of a comprehensive, smoke-free housing policy and expansion of existing secondhand smoke protections to include outdoor public spaces. Palo Alto's innovative thinking led to a collaborative partnership between the county and the city on a tobacco retail permit ordinance aimed at curbing the impacts of tobacco marketing and access on Palo Alto youth. And second, I'm delighted to present the City of Palo Alto with the Best Overall Award. This is a big deal. So the City of Palo Alto is being recognized with this award for achieving the most and some of the best healthy city strategies of all the cities and towns within the county of Santa Clara to date. That's this one that I need help to lift. So, in addition to the tobacco prevention work, some key achievements by the City of Palo Alto include Palo Alto's Safe Route to School Program, a partnership between the City of Palo Alto and Palo Alto Unified School District, and the Palo Alto PTA, which has achieved great success in getting more students walking and biking to school. And I just want to note that the Palo Alto Safe Routes to School Program has been so successful that it now serves as a model for communities, not just across the county, but indeed across the country. Recently, the City of Palo Alto has made strides to create healthier food and beverage environments in city facilities by installing water filling stations, like the one that I just made use of right outside the chambers here, and ensuring healthier snacks and drinks are offered at meetings, events, in cafes, and vending machines. And this year as well, the City of Palo Alto was recognized as an age-friendly city by the World Health Organization, a distinction awarded to those jurisdictions that involve older adults in decision-making and encourage older adults to retain autonomy and remain in the community by aging in place. In order to accomplish all of this great work, the county has had the pleasure to work with many Palo Alto staff, including Rosie Mesterhazy and Sylvia Starlack, Palo Alto Safe Route to School coordinators, Phil Bobel and Julia Weiss in the Public Works Department, and staff in the city manager and city attorney's office, who've been tremendous partners on the tobacco prevention policy work and helped with the overall Healthy Cities effort. So congratulations again for your achievements and your efforts to promote the public health of all employees and residents and visitors in the City of Palo Alto. And I look forward to this continued partnership. It's a delight to be here, and we encourage you with this great work, and we look forward to seeing what you'll do next. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'll come down and accept the awards, so...
Oh, yeah. After I accept them. I'm gonna speak immediately.
This one. But this one.
Sarah, don't go away.
I'll put it up here so the public can sort of see it. Well, I also wanted to say that I'm very pleased by this and very proud of our city, and really appreciate the recognition. As you may know, a couple of years ago, we made Healthy Cities one of our priorities in Palo Alto. And in our true Palo Alto tradition, we actually then went out and achieved it. And I think it's a huge honor to be named the healthiest city in Santa Clara County. So I'm very pleased by this. I really appreciate Dr. Cody highlighting many of the elements of the healthiest city in the county. And, you know, I wanted to say, by making it a priority, we wanted to create social, cultural, and physical environments that promote and support the health, well-being, and creative expression of our community. And I think we've done that. There are many examples, we go around our beautiful city, from the hundreds of kids riding their bikes to school, which you mentioned, to our tree canopy, to our parks, to our open spaces, to our art center, cultural activities, and to our commitment to recycling and sustainability. And I think it's good to take a moment and reflect. You know, this year I had the honor of being president of the Cities Association of Santa Clara County. And it's actually a really interesting feeling, because people will say, you know, "We won this award, and we got the bronze award for this." And, you know, we do it at the end of a meeting, you know, cheers and, you know, good things that occurred in your city. And I always feel funny saying, "Well, yeah, but we got the platinum award this year." And it goes like that every time. And I know there are other cities in the county that you are giving Healthy City awards. So at the next Cities Association meeting, it'll go like this. "We got this award, we got..." Yeah, but we got the best overall Healthy Cities. And, you know, that's just the way we are in Palo Alto. And it's actually very gratifying to be a council member and to be mayor in the city and all of that, because we do great work. And it's not real... I mean, the council obviously plays a role in that, but I've got to say, it's our staff. We made the Healthy Cities, Healthy Initiative, a priority, and our staff went out there and did the hard work to make this happen. And so, I actually was hoping we could give a round of applause for our staff on this. All right. I know Vice Mayor Niss wanted to say a few words.
Well, actually, Dr. Cody, who is also Sarah, I wanted to tell people that you're actually the homegrown product. Sarah was brought up in Palo Alto, still lives in Palo Alto, and serves Palo Alto. And we are the northernmost city in our county, as you know. We've known each other a long time. Sarah was at the county when I was at the county, before you were in your current position. But we have always really enjoyed working together. And seeing this is absolutely terrific, because these are all the things we worked for at the county, especially as we were emphasizing public health. So I only see one thing on this that troubles me, and I know that we've discussed this before, this certainly would be Supervisor Jaeger's interest. But under reduced exposure to sugary drinks, I think we, as a council, should attack that more fully. They have done that in Berkeley, they've done it in a variety of places, but it's one of the areas that I'm most concerned about, because the sugar drinks not only spike the sugar level, but they also your blood sugar level, but also, quite frankly, I think we have a dentist here tonight, but they're just really terrible for your teeth. So I know you can't force us to do that, but I would like to say that this is one of the areas where I'd certainly like to see us do more. And I would also, Karen, maybe you're going to speak, but also acknowledge that councilmember Holman pushed Healthy Cities, I think, before I came back on this governing body. So I'm really proud for what we've done with the Healthy Cities. We've also done it for adults, and we're even becoming a dementia-friendly city. So we're taking help from A to Z. But I'm so glad to see you here tonight. Thanks for coming.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I'll be brief, because a lot has been said, that I support and appreciate those comments. So thank you for the award. Very much appreciate it. And while we have had Healthy City, Healthy Community as a priority for three years, just to be clear, it's like, because it probably... Because our pattern is to like, keep them as priorities for three years, it doesn't mean the work will stop. And just as one example of that, and Councilmember Niss was one of the colleagues who signed on to this, we do have an anti-idling ordinance coming up that will probably be enacted next year, and other work that we look forward to improving our community on in the next year, in the years to come, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and we'd be delighted to work with you on sugary beverage policies.
So before you leave, we have Councilwoman Wolbach wants to speak, too.
First, just wanted to say, actually, that anti-idling ordinance will be coming to Policy and Services Committee meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, for anyone who, you know, wants to come down to City Hall again tomorrow. I just wanted to thank, actually, councilmembers Holman and Niss in particular. A couple of years ago, when I just joined council and we were at our retreat, talking about our priorities for the year, they lobbied me and said, you know, "A lot of the things you care about tie in with Healthy Cities, Healthy Community. Will you help us put it on our priorities for the year?" And I... They talked me into it, and I, you know, my expectations have been exceeded. The partnership between the city and the county, the work by the staff, councilmembers, and residents has really been tremendous. This, of course, does not mean we're as healthy as we want to be. This does not mean that we, you know, have achieved some goal, and, you know, as was suggested, this does not, you know... Achieving this does not mean that we can look at this merely in the rearview mirror. Even if it's not one of our priorities next year, a lot of the work that we're going to continue to work on with relation to housing and transportation and safety and our environment, and something else on our agenda tonight, our sustainability plan, a lot of these things will continue to contribute to the health of our community. But this really does establish that we are heading in the right direction, which is something to be proud of, and thank you for all of your help at the county.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments, because I do think that all of the work you do, it does support public health, and it's much, much broader, really, than what you've been recognized for, for this award. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, I have the honor, the great honor, of issuing a proclamation to honor Annette Glankoff. I want to say that, as mayor, you get to issue these proclamations. And of all the proclamations I've issued, this is the one I'm most happy about. I have known Annette for a long time now, and I find her to be one of the starring lights of our community. And I also want to tell you that I asked Annette if I could issue her proclamation, and she said, "Absolutely not." I then had to beg, get on my knees, "Please, please." She said, "No." She said, "No" to me for months. And finally, finally, she gave in. And it has made me incredibly happy, because, Annette, you make so many people happy in Palo Alto, and you give so much of yourself. And you definitely deserve this. So with that, I am going to read your proclamation. So, proclamation honoring Annette Glankoff. Whereas Annette Glankoff is recognized for her 20-plus years of full-time volunteer work and generous service to the City of Palo Alto and the surrounding community. And whereas Annette is the co-founder of Palo Alto Neighborhoods, PAN, where she heads the PAN Emergency Preparedness Committee, which has now trained hundreds of citizens volunteer, neighborhood and block preparedness coordinators. If those block coordinators want to just stand for a second, and we can see all of you came out to support Annette, I think that's fantastic. That's why I had them stand. I was worried that you wouldn't notice them. So whereas Annette has been instrumental in integrating various emergency service teams and bringing awareness of emergency preparedness to other community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, businesses, and schools, as well as teaching multiple training courses and conducting preparedness drills several times a year. And whereas Annette helped form the Palo Alto Stanford Citizens Core Council, served on its steering committee, and co-chaired the Safety Fair Committee. And whereas Annette is also the founder, past chair, and current chair of the Midtown Residents Association, where she started and maintains the first neighborhood e-newsletter, led the efforts to bring public art to Midtown, and played an integral role in implementation of park improvements in the Midtown community. And whereas Annette has served on many other influential organizations, such as the Peninsula Stroke Association, Leadership Palo Alto, Alumni Association of Leadership, Mid Peninsula... Sorry, that was all one. Santa Clara County EMS Agency, Achieve Kids, American Heart Association, Palo Alto Chapter, Palo Alto Rotary Club, and the Women's Club. And whereas Annette's greatest strength is her ability to listen, include all stakeholders, and points of view, and to make everyone feel their opinion is valued, Annette is a very kind and thoughtful person, and her generosity is greatly appreciated. Now therefore, I, H. Gregory Scharf, Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the city council, do hereby honor Annette Glankoff for her contributions to the City of Palo Alto, and extend our sincerest thanks for her hard work in ensuring our community is a safe and exceptional place to live. Thank you very much, Annette. So now, before you speak, I'm gonna give it to you, then I'll let you speak.
Well, I did want to say a few words, and I'm really humbled by your amazing words and these wonderful vests in the audience, and I really appreciate that. But before I make a few comments, I also wanted to just give my heartfelt congratulations to Dave Doctor, who really has been an amazing asset to the city, and we'll all be very sorry to see him go. So again, I really wanted to thank everyone on the council, and especially Mayor Scharf, for his extra effort in making this happen, and for Sherri Furman for getting the ball rolling. We all know it takes a village, and Dave mentioned it really takes a community. And I have been really blessed to have worked with many, many splendid, dedicated people to maintaining and improving the quality of life in our fair city, especially from the neighborhoods. And we have a few neighborhood leaders here, who I'm very proud of, Leadership Palo Alto, which you mentioned, and our wonderful emergency service volunteers, who have... They come in multiple flavors, so we also have a few block preparedness coordinators, neighborhood coordinators, and community emergency medical response teams as well. And their work is really represented in this proclamation, and so I really wanted to acknowledge them. It's just not me, it's really all of this community in Palo Alto. As you know, one of my key areas, the focus, is emergency preparedness. So to that end, I wanted to be the first to formally invite the council and the public to our 2018 kickoff. And Beth, if you haven't distributed my flyer, and so I want to invite the council and the public to this grand event, which will be held right here in council chambers on January the 18th, with an earlier reception, and the meeting starts at 7 o'clock. Director, Emergency Services Director Ken Duker, and I are co-chairing the event. Who's coming? Well, city manager Jim Keen has accepted it. Vice Mayor Niss is going to graciously present opening remarks. And our almost brand-new police chief, in a couple of minutes, Robert Johnson, and Fire Chief Nickel will make closing remarks. So, the topic, while North Korea's saying war is imminent, the horrific devastating fires in the wine country in Southern California, and potentially the seasonal flooding, we have selected the topic of calamities happen, what you need to know. So as a further note on this topic, my own personal priority for next year is to work on, to persuade you, the council, and you, the city, to fund and implement a comprehensive...
Palo Alto is and make it so very, very special, and in many, many ways. And you stand out among those volunteers, and that's why you're getting this proclamation this evening. So thank you, thank you, and thank you. And yes, as, as Vice Mayor said, and you get to keep doing it.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think you've, you've been an institution in Palo Alto, and I mean that in the best possible sense of the word. And I think you've done a lot of things, both large and small, and we mentioned a lot of the large ones, helping to found and run PAN, the Midtown Residents Association, which I think is one of the better neighborhood associations, emergency prep, rotary. But I'm sure you've done a lot of things, small things for the community that nobody knows about, and I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done. I think it's the perfect time of year to do this, and so thank you for everything you've done and everything you will do in the future.
What they said, and I'll, I'll, I'll take it one step further and just say, thanks for just being a really great example. I think a lot of people look to you as a real role model, on a lot of levels, on the things that were in the resolution, on the things that fly below the radar, and for just being a very good friend to so many people in Palo Alto who have really appreciated it. So thank you.
Councilmember Koo.
So, to my partner, I just want to thank you for all the guidance that you gave me through the emergency preparedness years that we worked together, and I've seen your tireless and you never gave up attitude, and that's something that I've learned from you. So I just want to say thank you for all the service that you've provided to the city in bringing emergency prep to where it is today. Thank you.
Okay, and now we have a couple of people that want to speak. Sherri Furman.
I'm, in case you don't know, I'm Sherri Furman. Hello, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Niss, councilmembers. Annette's a very modest person, and so I'm going to keep this relatively brief. So Annette and I have been friends and co-volunteers, and she's been my mentor for over 20 years now, in emergency prep, in Palo Alto Neighborhoods, in Midtown Residents Association. And frankly, this recognition is long overdue for all the, the effort she's put in. She has ensured that many of us have received proclamations from you, including myself, and so I'm thrilled to see us finally recognize all the effort she's put in. And you've covered the, the big things. There are, there are a lot of small things that Annette has been involved in, particularly in Midtown. We've got the public art on the walls of Walgreens and CVS, the bears in Hoover Park were an effort, the bathrooms in Seal Park for, for that matter. And a big one that a lot of people don't realize, if you've not been here a long time, is that, that final completion of Greer Park, which for a long time was a maintenance yard and, and all of that. And one of Annette's greatest strengths is that you can bring up the most harebrained idea to her, and she will smile and listen and compliment you for your thoughts and give it serious consideration, and always, always be kind about it, unlike some of us. So I'm, I'm happy that you've finally recognized what all of us have known for a lot of years about the, the untiring efforts this woman puts into our community out of a love for us, the city, you know, all of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Becky Sanders.
Hi there, I'm Becky Saunders, Olivia Ventura, and I know Annette through the Media Center, where somehow she got me to produce a bunch of emergency prep videos for her. I know her through the Palo Alto Neighborhoods Association, where she pulled me in just to help out with a few things. Oh, and then somehow I started the Ventura Neighborhood Association. I won't know how that happened. How doesn't that do it? Everybody likes her, and she's super effective and sneaky, and I'm not the only person. I've talked to others here who have come under a nut spell. So I just want to proclaim that Annette is a role model, a collaborator, a friend, a leader, a genius, a manipulator? No. But all in a good cause. She builds consensus, and she is very, very effective. Annette, I have never met anyone like you, and I thank you so much for all you have personally done to me, for me, to me, for me, and for this city that we both love. Thank you so much, and thank you, council. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Well, Annette, I just want to say thank you from all of us, your beloved of the city. Thank you very much. Now, agenda changes and deletions, I, do we, we did have something, didn't we?
Yes, item number six, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, item number six, yes. So, um, yeah, all right, I know what the problem is, I have the wrong agenda here. So item number six, which was the adoption of amending the Evergreen Park Mayfield Residential Preferred Parking. Staff has requested this item be continued to a date uncertain. I'm going to move that we move it to a date uncertain. A second, second by Councilmember Walbach, if we could vote on the board. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Fine absent. Then we get to City Manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Just following up on the mayor's motion on item number six, we are tentatively planning on bringing this item back as an action item on January 29th, but that is not absolutely certain, just looking at your schedule, but is to get back as soon as we can after the council break. As we pointed out, this, this was an important break, so it gives our staff some time for more discussion with neighborhood folks. There's been significant interest in this item from both the business side and the residential side of our community, so we have scheduled a meeting for the evening of December 20th here at City Hall in the community meeting room on the first floor to support dialogue between the different stakeholders and discuss the staff recommendations for some proposed modifications. The South Gate discussion will start at 6:30, and the Evergreen Park discussion will start at 7:30. And we recognize that not everyone may be available for this meeting, it being so close to the holidays, so we have scheduled a, a second additional meeting in the community meeting room for Wednesday, January 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Announcements for this meeting will go out to the public more broadly soon, and we hope those who have interest in these programs will be able to attend either December 20th or January 10th before we return to City Council. I did want, as a nice follow-up to some of the, the work concerns that Annette Glankoff helped represent on the volunteer side of our community, want to announce that, again, on January 16th from 6:30 p.m., we will have the ceremony in the council chambers to honor our emergency services volunteers and hear from disaster preparedness experts. And on a couple of art-related projects, you may have noticed by now the new temporary art installation out in King Plaza outside City Hall. The Artwork Forge is a piece of work. It is by Pittsburgh artist Toby Atticus Fraley, and it's a retro-style, interactive robotic sculpture created, creating on-demand, unique artworks for visitors in just a couple of minutes. It's inspired by mid-century popular science magazines, and Artist Fraley's whimsical and thought-provoking artwork brings play and applied science together while potentially igniting timely discussions about the evolving relationship between humans and machines. By inserting four quarters, sorry, no Apple Pay on this one, it's retro, a visitor can watch their artwork being created by the Artwork Forge and eventually deposit it into a tray at the other end of the sculpture for collection by the purchaser. That sculpture will remain on display through April 2018. And that's it on that item. And then lastly, as part of the city's comprehensive neighborhood traffic safety and bicycle boulevard project, which represents a significant step towards Palo Alto's vision of a system of neighborhood bike and pedestrian routes, the public art program is working on a pilot neighborhood beautification project for Lewis Road Fielding Drive intersection. We invited Palo Alto and Bay Area-based artists and graphic designers to submit proposals for designs to be incorporated into newly constructed bike and pedestrian Lewis Fielding Raised Intersection. And as design guidelines, we ask that the proposals draw inspiration from the unique character of the community, its history and diversity, or institutions and landmarks that make this neighborhood distinct while enhancing safety and connectivity for people biking and walking. And so here is the proposed, I think up there on the, on your screens, the winning concept by artist Damon Belanger called Go With The Flow, appropriately named. In Chinese and Japanese culture, koi fish are symbolic of good fortune, prosperity and longevity. And that's all I have to report, other than I will point out that there is an additional, an app places memo distributed today for tomorrow's Policy and Services Committee meeting on the 2018 council priority setting process. It's information only at this point for the council and the community as a whole, but we will hear from the council and community members tomorrow night on proposed 2018 priorities for the council's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Oral communications, do we have any oral communications? Oh, it's right up here. All right. Hamilton Hitchings, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I came here tonight to, to help honor Annette. I'm one of the people who fell under her spell. That's actually not what I was planning on talking to you about, but I'm just going to say a couple of comments first. Annette also helped write our safety plan for the comp plan. She was one of the principal authors of that, which will guide public safety for the next 15 years in Palo Alto. I am in a lot of meetings with Annette, and it's always very well organized. It's a professional executive, and she definitely has drawn me much more into Palo Alto community affairs than I ever anticipated, but I feel like my life's a lot richer, so thank you, Annette. What I wanted to talk to you about is I work out at the YMCA about three times a week, and there's a lot going on on Ross Road, and what I'm really concerned about is child bike safety. The fundamental concept behind the Ross Road Bike Boulevard is make bikes, bike in the middle of traffic in order to increase bike safety. So they have eliminated any ability not to drive in the middle of traffic. You cannot, they have these, what really bothers me with that project is they have these simultaneous bulbs that have just enough room for two cars to pass each other, but no room for a bicycle. And the way they've done is the bike is forced to come out into the middle of the road from the side, and I'm really worried, some kid is going to be seriously injured. I've never seen this configuration anywhere in Palo Alto with these simultaneous bulbs that leave no room for the, that only leave enough room for the cars and not for the bike, or force the car to slow down so they don't hit the bike. And it just takes one person who's rushing, or somebody who's not paying attention, and a kid's going to get run over. And it's, you know, people get up in the morning, they're off to work, the kids are all biking to school. I think it's a very dangerous configuration, and I think the fundamental design flaw is that forcing bikes to swerve into traffic is not safe. So I'd, I'd really ask that you drive from Colorado to the YMCA and take a look for yourself at what I'm talking about. This needs council or executive intervention. Otherwise, a kid may get seriously hurt. So please give that your attention. Thank you.
Thanks, Hamilton. Maybe, maybe City Manager Keen, you could have somebody talk to Hamilton later about Ross Road. Our next speaker is, is Dr. Tim Mulcahy.
Good evening. Thanks for listening to me today, tonight. This is about my thoughts on the pilot program in the Evergreen Mayfield Park area. We all understand the need to eliminate the long-term parking of the people outside the district, but we've been part of this community for nine to 20 years in some instances. And now we fund a program. My office is, what, about $2,000 in eight months so far, and we're still scrambling to re-park cars because we don't have the lack of permits. So you all, permits were available in the first round of the program, and many of you on the council actually called and asked if we were okay, and we were, and now we're not. Six months into the program, the one, the permits that were there, they're now are someplace else, and nobody seems to know where or how they, where they went to. I'm four short in my office, and there's about 40 short in the district for employees. And it's interesting, because the city did not actually survey the businesses to see how many employees this would affect, I guess, so it was done on density. So now that the density is now underneath the, and, and has worked to decrease the density in the, in the district, we're still, the residents want no more or less permits in the future. So that's kind of a problem for me. And we shouldn't have to scramble every six months to get a permit for the next six months. It's, it, it just doesn't make good business sense, or it doesn't make good city sense. So the council will, will, will need to revisit this, as you know, in the coming months, and I would respectfully ask the council to consider realistic solutions to this problem and give the community health care workers and the community businesses some say in the final solution. So thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Doug Lou, Dr. Doug, Dr. Doug Lou.
My name is Doug Lou, and I work on the medical dental complex of the intersection of Park and El Camino. I've been there for 23 years now, and recently parking has become a really big issue because I can't get my staff to park nearby my office. When the RPP program first started, we applied and were given six parking permits, then somehow they got revoked. We got reassigned to park in Zone C. So we're in the north end of Evergreen. Zone C is between California and Page Mill. So now that the density is now underneath the, and has worked to decrease the density in the, in the district, we're still, the residents want no more or less permits in the future. So that's kind of a problem for me. And we shouldn't have to scramble every six months to get a permit for the next six months. It just doesn't make good business sense, or it doesn't make good city sense. So the council will need to revisit this, as you know, in the coming months. And I would respectfully ask the council to consider realistic solutions to this problem and give the community health care workers and the community businesses some say in the final solution. So thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Doug Lou, Dr. Doug Lou.
My name is Doug Lou, and I work on the medical dental complex of the intersection of Park and El Camino. I've been there for 23 years now, and recently parking has become a really big issue because I can't get my staff to park nearby my office. When the RPP program first started, we applied and were given six parking permits, then somehow they got revoked. We got reassigned to park in Zone C. So we're in the north end of Evergreen. Zone C is between California and Page Mill, so it's 1.1 miles. So I think that's a little unreasonable, especially that I have five ladies who work in dress clothes and heels, and if it starts raining, it just makes it unreasonable. So I think the solution for the city is to reassess uses of the streets and the distribution of the parking permits, because given six employee parking permits in Zone C is not reasonable, especially since I've driven around A, B, and C during lunchtime, and it's probably utilized maybe 35 to 40 percent. And I know it was evaluated before the RPP program started, but I think it needs to get reevaluated now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Stan Vigilajic.
Good evening. Nice to see some familiar faces. And what's the night at the City Council without talking about parking? So just a quick update on Evergreen from my end of things. I'm a dentist in Evergreen, right outside of the Assessment District. We're on Park Avenue in El Camino. I'm also a neighbor to a lot of wonderful people, a lot of them who are patients, and I want to be a good neighbor. We have two phases of this program. The phase one, for neighbors, it was only phase one as a year program for us. It was split in two. On the neighbor end, from what the conversations I've had, some things got better, some things didn't change much on our end. Thank you all for following up on us. The first six months went great. According to the numbers, five people were short permits. There were some things to be improved on. The second phase, mysteriously, according to our calculations, we're about 40 permits short. And presently, you know, I've sat down with the neighbors, I've sat down with some of our colleagues. I've identified four different issues. We can touch back on this during the meeting on the 20th, but renewal is one issue. I think if we were allocated a permit, it shouldn't be sold before the new one gets renewed, or to somebody else, I should be able to have a right to renew it, and I didn't. The other one is distribution. Neighbors can only buy a permit in Zone A, which is our little area. Businesses should be the same. I think it makes a lot of other issues going forward a lot better. Supply, we had some creative ideas when we sat down on a limited basis to talk about increasing supply, maybe incorporating El Camino in a way where lessen the burden, take away some clustering, and clustering is the last issue. And unfortunately, we feel that the biggest burden of this was that, for our office, we had to re-park cars. On average, our staff spends about two hours reparking cars every week. The cars are still in the neighborhood. We don't know where the new cars came from, but we have some good ideas of how to fix this. And we're going to talk about this a lot more, but, you know, eight months into the program, what I'm hoping for, when this comes around next time, we kind of look at the big picture, we all sit down together, and we introduce some flexibility. And maybe for us, for the neighbors and the city, we might have to do some harder things, but we can make this work. The issue we ran into this time around is, you know, we called the city, and there was no way to release some emergency permits. So now we're, you know, we paid the extra money for scratchers. Now there are no scratchers. Now we're reparking cars. So we're trying to find a way to come up with a way and make this work, and we hope we can count on a little bit of your help, a little bit of a broader vision, and come up with a program that's going to be easily renewable going into the future, make it work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Wu.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Dr. Eric Wu, orthodontist, Evergreen Park. I share many of the sentiments that my dental colleagues have already touched upon. I basically just wanted to add a few more things. There's been a lot of talk of community this evening, and as a 37-year resident of Palo Alto, it is the community that I grew up in, as well as the community that I decided to start up my business. I think just recently, Councilman Tanaka sent out an email regarding how important it was that neighborhood serving businesses such as Icing and the New Mozart School were important contributors of value to our community. And I completely agree. That's why I support community organizations such as Icing. And I'm sure, you know, many of my dental colleagues do the same. It's important to continue to support these neighborhood serving businesses because, in fact, here in Palo Alto, we have world-class dentists, truly. I mean, many of them are standing right here in this room. And frankly, you know, we need to support the neighborhood serving businesses such as dentists, just like the dentist service, and provide world-class dentistry to the community. Long story short, dentistry is under attack. Rising costs, decreased reimbursements in insurance, and the rise of corporate dentistry is right around the corner. If we don't support our local serving businesses, we could be losing some of them in the future. And then we'll lose some of that high-touch, high-service dentistry to be substituted by corporate dental clinics, which I'm sure no one wants. In summary, I would just urge council members to consider our, our issues at the next upcoming meetings regarding the RPP program in Evergreen Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Boone.
Good evening, council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue, and I would like to inform you about the recent progress in Redwood City on that city's El Camino Real corridor plan. Last week, the city council approved their corridor plan they've been working on for about a year and a half, which, among many other things, sets a goal to install physically separated bike lanes on El Camino Real, all the way through Redwood City, all two and a half miles of it. They would replace parallel car parking with bike lanes, and the concept was, received quite positive review. All of the council members had something good to say about it, said that they liked the idea, that they thought it was a step forward for the city. And I think it's time that Palo Alto review that concept as well. El Camino Real, just like in Redwood City, here in Palo Alto is really not a usable street for people bicycling. It's not a pleasant street to walk along or to cross, and it is really a barrier to long-term sustainable transportation. A lot of the things that you're working on creating a healthier community, creating a more sustainable community, are undermined by the main street in the city being so auto-oriented. It doesn't need to be that way. It doesn't need to be dangerous for people to ride bikes. It doesn't need to be discouraging for people to walk or to ride bicycles. But it's going to take some kind of study to look at what are your options. In Palo Alto, you could replace the car parking with bike lanes, as Redwood City says that they're going to do, or reduce the number of lanes from six lanes to four lanes. In Redwood City, they only have one choice, really, because they only have four through lanes in their downtown. So I think that concept, I do appreciate all the effort being put into creating new bicycle boulevards like on Ross Road and other streets, but those are really the streets that are not dangerous. They're not, they're not difficult to walk or bike on. We need to, we need to stop ignoring our streets that are barriers to bicycling and fix them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Baines.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf and Vice Mayor and City Council. Actually put down the wrong agenda item on my slip, but I'll use this time and just want to say thank you, Mr. Keen, for the selection of our police chief. I think you guys did a good job on the selection process, and with that, we have a good chief coming on board. We know that Dennis Burns was very high shoes to replace, but I think that this is a good start with Chief Johnson. So I just want to say thank you to that. Sorry for the mix-up on the agenda item.
Thank you.
But I do agree with the man, because I live over there by Ross.
Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. I'm here to alert you to a problem that we have in Palo Alto, that there are more jobs than there are houses to hold the people that work at the jobs. And this has resulted in, at the end of it, the end of a long line, homelessness. And so I believe we need to get more housing, and we need to make a place for people who will never be able to afford any kind of rental housing. But I've decided that it doesn't need to be what you call a real shelter. I've been, and they're, some of them are very nice. The religious women from different parishes come, and they cook a little meal, and the women, that's a women's shelter at least, lie down on their mattresses, and it's fine. I don't think we have to be that wonderful. I just think we need to have a room someplace and let them bring their own bedding to lie down on. But you have to have a safe place for women to be at night. You just have to. It's just not proper not to. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I think that we're missing a bit that there are people who could pay for housing if it were made available to them. I think the SRO concept needs to be elevated so that it is something very attractive, something that you wouldn't mind living in yourself. If you, you know, suppose you, you didn't have a job, and you couldn't get out too much and didn't have too many activities, you really just want a nice, pleasant place to sleep. I think, I think that those could be built. And you do have to have the, a simple modification in your description of what you want and what you will permit, in that I believe you should talk about the number of square feet, just the FAR of a, of a building, not the number of units. I don't think it's fair to say that 14 people can't each have a bedroom so that, and it's because you insist that it be only three people with five times as much space. It just, it doesn't seem as if it's fair. And as I have mentioned, we do have the federal government, and we have what I think is a disgrace. We have homeless veterans. I believe the federal government could be pushed into providing housing for those veterans at Morphet Field, and I think they should, and I think it would be greatly to our advantage if we were able to get them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Libby Lundgren.
Hi, I'm Libby Lundgren. I help with the Safe Routes to School program. I just have heard a lot of grumbling about the Ross Road start of the Bike Boulevard project, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody just kind of gives the project a chance and understands that it's all part of a master plan, and that a lot of the input came from the parents. That was actually, the purpose of it was to help create a safer route for the schools and to get, to keep, help slow the traffic to keep the kids safe on the roads. So maybe just make sure that we get the right education out to everybody on how to use the roads properly, and that's part of our program with educating the kids. And I think it's new, but I think once people get used to it and start understanding the benefits, that it should be okay, so.
Thank you. All right. Now we're at minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? All right, I'll move to approve the minutes. Can I have a second? Did you vote on the board? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Fine absent. And now we come to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor Niss.
Yes, I would like to pull number 14 with your support.
All right. I'll support pulling item number 14. Okay, so that item is pulled, and I guess we'll have that to a date uncertain. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I'd like to register no vote on 12.
Okay, registered no vote on 12. I better write this down. Councilmember Holman.
I'd like to register no vote on number nine.
Number nine. Councilmember Holman. Okay. With that, can we vote on the, I'll make a motion to approve the, oh wait, before I do that, we have a bunch of speakers, right? Do I have the, okay, there they are. All right, bunch of speakers. Pete Moffett, to be followed by Terry Haltzheimer.
Is this one the number we looked at?
No.
Was it water?
Was it water?
Yeah, it was water.
Oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Pete Moffett, and I'm a general contractor, and I've lived and worked in Palo Alto for the past 30 years. We are coming into a time of trying to understand how to deal with the dewatering process and the CCANT walls, and we're, you know, in my experience and history in Palo Alto, we've probably done 20 basements of the 22 we'd had to do dewatering on. And so we're, we're appreciative of the Public Works process in getting to know or understand how the CCANT walls will work. We think we'll do our first project this coming year, and we're looking forward to understanding how it affects our, our schedule and costs on a job and how it works into the process of putting a basement in Palo Alto. While we're excited about that process, we also understand that there are projects where the CCANT wall is, is not feasible. The machines that use to do the CCANT or cutoff walls are quite large and not appropriate for any type of basement retrofit work we do, or putting a basement underneath an existing house. You know, in our, in our projects in Palo Alto, kind of understanding how to preserve and, preserve existing houses and, and historic houses, we come across these projects once every few years where we're trying to put a basement under an existing house. And in that particular case, the CCANT wall doesn't seem like it's really a viable option. So we appreciate that Public Works has worked at encouraging us to do the CCANT walls, but it's not requiring it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. I'd like to take a minute to encourage you to support item number 10 on the consent calendar, which regards the dewatering requirements. This item needs immediate attention and support, so limits and enforcements can be put in place to cut down and reduce the tremendous amount of waste of one of our most critical and important natural resources, which is our groundwater. There are several flaws in this ordinance that need to be changed or adjusted, or corrected for that matter, especially those involving commercial projects. I live next to one of the most largest dewatering projects the city has ever faced. In the past year, from June until the end of October, over 45 million gallons of our groundwater was taken out of the ground. It's gone forever. It's gone into our sewer, or not wastewater system. This is a tremendous waste and a disappointment that this water was lost from our city. I believe that, however, that this ordinance that is on the consent calendar is a good first effort to addressing this desperate need for a solution. Second, I'd like to just take a moment to appreciate the honor of Annette Glencough tonight for her service to this great city. As a member of PAN for over 10 years, I have seen her tireless work and her effort on a, on a regular basis. She has worked tirelessly on emergency preparedness and earthquake preparations as well. I want to thank Annette for being the great resource, which she truly is in this city. Thank you.
Sterling Banks, to be followed by Fred Baylen.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Sterling Banks. I work for SG Banks, Inc., a local dewatering contractor here in the Bay Area. And I came to speak about basement dewatering in Palo Alto. The goal here is to minimize The goal here is to minimize groundwater discharge. What this will do, this will minimize the depletion of underground aquifers. It'll also minimize negative impacts to existing landscaping, and potentially reduce the settlement and subsidence issues which may occur from extended de-watering. How do we do this? The current rules in place require if the homeowner is going to build a basement into the water table, that a geotechnical report be provided, and the city of Palo Alto requires that only one test bore be provided with this geotechnical report. So, we would like to have four test bores provided with the geotechnical report, as well as include a pezometer, and this is if you're going to build a basement in the water table. We also want to have a motion to allow sumping, sumping combined with, with the de-watering This will, this will allow for less groundwater discharge to the nearby storm drain. What we're also requiring, or would like to see happen, is better data up front. This will allow us to do a better engineering design on the de-watering system for residential and commercial basements. This, this better data up front will potentially decrease the de-watering well depth and count, and decrease the overall groundwater discharge from the site. Thank you.
Fred Belling, to be followed by Rita Varell.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Palo Alto Groundwater for their research, education, and activism, activism on this matter, for the city of Palo Alto for taking up their charge, not only to save Palo Alto groundwater, but also, and to my point tonight, to prevent other deleterious effects from interfering with groundwater flow. For all the truly amazing scientific and technical benefits over the decades in the valley, there are some byproducts that those less civic-minded might prefer to keep under the surface. Therefore, I'm pleased to see definitions in the ordinance before you tonight for groundwater plume, groundwater plume area, and groundwater exclusionary techniques. When you de-water an aquifer, if there are any volatile organic compounds in there, they'll move as well, and thereby, you extend the risk of vapor intrusion of cancer-causing substances into a nearby area. So, after you move forward on rev two here, I'm really looking forward to the next rev of this, to have some statements within the ordinance that say how you're going to implement specific ways to protect residents from underwater, groundwater plumes that may be impacted by people taking out water from basements, within basements. Thank you.
Rita Varell, to be followed by Kimberly Wong.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody who has come out tonight to speak on the de-watering ordinance. I think this is the first time that we've had representatives from the construction industry join with Safe Palo Alto's groundwater in supporting an ordinance, and I would particularly like to thank Phil Bobel and the Public Works Department. They had a stakeholders meeting on 11:30, which was open to the public, and the construction industry, and we sat down, and really, everybody had incredible input into the process. And so, I would ask that the city council approve the ordinance revisions on the consent calendar as listed, and also as proposed by staff, direct staff, to follow up in the first quarter of 2018, with additional amendments to the de-watering ordinance that would address the concerns mentioned by the speakers so far, and that will be mentioned by the speakers forthcoming. You know, de-watering does not have to be a win-lose situation. With careful thought and consideration and implementation, it can be a win-win. De-watering can occur, but can occur on a limited basis, thereby protecting property owners' rights to maximize the value of their property, and address community concerns, and preserve a really vital, valuable, irreplaceable, once it's gone, it's gone, resource that is the one thing that is vital to all life. So, you're going to be talking about sustainability later on tonight. It starts with water. Part of the city of Palo Alto has come up with idea, the, the amount of sustainable groundwater that can be extracted each year, and that is 2,500 acre-feet. The de-watering will subtract from that. We can all work together to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Wong, to be followed by Bob Moss.
Hello, dear mayor, city council members. My name is Kimberly Wong, and I'm a longtime resident of Palo Alto. I first began noticing de-watering about 10 years back when Castile was building their gym across the street from my house. Water was gushing out for months, and I've noticed it happening all over town since then. Most recently, during a Bike Palo Alto event, I saw water gushing onto California Avenue in the morning hours, and after, and many hours after, when I rode by again. With more and more residents wanting to maximize the property values, and more commercial developers wanting to build underground parking, we have a big problem. Groundwater is not, is unlimited, is not unlimited. It must be conserved. I asked the city council to support the Public Works recommendation and approve their 2018 de-watering ordinance. Also, I asked you to accept staff's recommendations to return with substantive additions to the ordinance early in 2018. These additions will make the 2018 de-watering ordinance stronger and address public concerns. Both parts are necessary. One without the other is inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by Dan Garber.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf, and house members. Well, this ordinance is a good start, but it's not really going to solve the problem. What the city should be doing is the same thing that Mountain View has been done, has done for more than 20 years. Don't build any basements. There have not been any structures in Mountain View, either commercial or residential, with a basement, since 1993. And that certainly hasn't kept people from building and living in Mountain View. One of the things that creates a real problem when you have a basement, Palo Alto's aquifers are shallow. The aquifer under our house, and we're several miles from the bay, is 21 feet. If you get east of Middlefield, the aquifer in some places is as little as five or six feet. So, a basement is going to penetrate the aquifer, deplete our precious groundwater, and interfere with water flow. Another possibility, depending on where you're building it, is it will disturb contaminated soil and groundwater, and create real physical problems. It generates vapor into the buildings around it, which is contaminated, and can poison people. It's a bad idea to have basements that come anywhere close to the aquifer. And if you don't want to have to look at every single project and measure how deep the groundwater is there, do what Mountain View has done, and just don't allow them. That will eliminate the problem, and we won't have to have this issue anymore.
Dan Garber, to be followed by David Page.
Regarding item number 10, Public Works 2017 findings show that cutoff, a cutoff wall can reduce the amount of water removed from a site to zero, or nearly so. This is a dramatic validation of this approach. Although Public Works' recommendations to council allow for both regular, broad-area de-watering, and a cutoff wall to be used, the financial and procedural and scheduling requirements to use the standard broad-area de-watering strategy are so burdensome that I do not know why any homeowner looking to build in an area of high groundwater would not pursue a cutoff wall instead. Safe Palo Alto Groundwater supports staff's recommendation that regular broad-area de-watering require a hydrologist's report. Assuming the hydrologist's report is made with the intent of optimizing de-watering system design, it will enable significantly reduced groundwater pumping regardless of the method chosen. Regarding costs, a general contractor who did the cutoff wall on Webster that took zero water off-site reports that the cost was nearly the same as doing regular broad-area de-watering. That work has also contributed significantly to other learnings. Importantly, doing a cutoff wall without, will allow us to possibly eliminate costly backfill, which is important. Market forces are also driving the cutoff wall costs down. In a recent conversation, the cutoff wall vendor is already looking at technologies and methods that will reduce costs by a third, and reduce the six-to-10-week process of doing a regular broad-area de-watering to something closer to two weeks. Staff's recommendations will drive both significant costs and scheduling reductions that create important inducements to a homeowner, and drive dramatic conservation of our communities' underground aquifers.
David Page, to be followed by Keith Bennett.
Hi, everyone. David Page from Midtown. I wanted to speak about item 11, the net metering. My wife and I had a contractor come out to our property today to look at putting solar panels on the roof, and he informed us that we were lucky with our timing, because Palo Alto is cutting off incentives for net metering and solar panels as of the end of the year, the end of the month. I do not understand this type of thinking. It seems like the opposite direction of being sustainable. Maybe there's some, maybe there's something going on that I don't understand, but I would strongly recommend we move in the direction of providing more incentives for homeowners and everybody else to be more sustainable, more, and creating less pollution. And if the comeback is going to be about carbon offsets, then my understanding is, if you look into what happens in the Third World with so-called carbon offsets, they're a really terrible, horrible idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keith Bennett, to be followed by Joan Larrabee.
I'm Keith Bennett, an active member of Safe Palo Alto's groundwater, a group of 300 persons interested in Palo Alto's groundwater. Would those in the audience interested in construction de-watering please stand? Our diverse concerns include managing groundwater as the resource it is, keeping toxic plumes in place, applicants and contractors desiring clear, cost-effective, practical regulations, maintaining soil moisture for our canopy, protecting infrastructure and properties from damage, and as well as the role soil and groundwater play in both flood protection, and therefore, public safety, and stormwater management. We ask that council approve the consent calendar item number 10. However, don't stop there. Please come back early in 2018 with a comprehensive ordinance addressing the many open issues which we provided in a list of questions to, or list of comments to council, and as proposed by staff in their response to, to the question by Lydia Koo, Councilmember Koo. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Larrabee.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. I'm Joan Larrabee. I live at 777 San Antonio Road, Palo Alto, in the Green House condominium complex. And our most recent newsletter has an article that says, "Please Limit Water Usage." It mentions we're still under drought conditions, as we all know from all of the fires in, up in the wine country and down in Southern California. At the Green House, we've been very good about saving water. We have our lawns planted with drought-resistant grass. We've replaced the overhead sprinklers. We've computerized and have timers on our watering. We're doing what other Palo Alto residents and businesspeople have done. We have spent money and time and effort to reduce our water usage. In fact, I've even read the Palo Alto Water Use Guidelines, which finds, which I found out, our water can be restricted by the city. They can come out if you're using too much, and put a little knob on your water line. We are like the other 66,000 residents and businesspeople. We've worked hard to do this. While residents have been reducing our water usage and spending money and making an effort, we find out that developers have not. For instance, I live across the street from where two Marriott hotels are going. They're five stories high, and in order to maximize the use of the space, they are going to put underground parking. And the underground parking, of course, will require a great deal of de-watering, because we are so close to the bay. The aquifer underneath where the hotels are proposed is seven feet. That goes from the floor to the tip of my fingers. That's seven feet. So, I expect the developers should also have to save water like the rest of us do. Please approve item 10 on the consent calendar. I understand additional staff time and recommendations will address the use of the cutoff walls, and I recommend that you all approve that, and give the staff time and money to work on this. De-watering should be reduced and not expanded, so please save Palo Alto's groundwater. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Muñoz, to be followed by Joseph Rann.
Thanks, folks. I won't take your time. I want only to remind you of something that you might like to be reminded of. The attention to the water which is in the ground is nothing, is nothing new. 50 years ago, when we built our house in Los Altos Hills, we could not just dig a well, which I wanted to do. No, they were going to charge us $10,000 to put in this well, which of course, at the time, we couldn't afford, so we didn't do it. But they were following the lead of the county, and the county also does not let you just dig a well willy-nilly on the supposition that the groundwater belongs to you. Doesn't belong to you. Belongs to the community. There you are. And I, it is, it does give you pause if the developers are given more of the community resources than the regular citizens that live here. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Joseph Rann.
My name's Joseph Rann, and I'm a resident of Palo Alto for 37 years, and I also started a business called The Purple Pipe Company. We come and get the groundwater, and we reuse it on city property, just landscaping at small park, pocket parks. Right now, at the high-flow, broad-area, area de-watering sites, we're only able to recapture about 2% of the water. There's an ordinance where we come, one day, we can get the water and reuse it. Right now, there's just not a whole lot of areas to come and take the water and dump it. We have to kind of hand-apply it. And I'm just saying that in the future, if there were more infrastructure projects at parks, we could reuse that water and replace the potable drinking water use at city parks. Right now, with the ordinance, how it's going to go next year, we might recapture 3% of that water, but if there were actually some places to dump the water, we could get it up to 10 to 20% of that water. And if the broad-area de-watering were more tailored to be site-specific, that number might go up some more. Two-thirds of the groundwater de-watering was from two commercial sites this past season. I think there's going to be another one on San Antonio Road at Lafayette, which should be a huge number of gallons. The other residential sites, there's two roads you could do, the CCANT walls and the broad-area de-watering. And I just think that after 10 seasons of putting in CCANT walls at residential And I just think that after 10 seasons of putting in Seacant Walls at residential sites, you might have Seacant Walls which take up and they go down 35 feet, which is 25 feet below, or 20 feet below where a basement might go. And after 10 years of doing this, is there some sort of a long-term effect? Does an EIR have to be done? Will it affect the flood zone? Or who knows what's going to happen? So I just think that both, I'm not knocking either one. I do have some business interest in the whole thing, but I do believe that both should be available and tailored to be more site-specific. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now if we could vote on the consent calendar with, let me get this right, Council Tanaka voting no on item 12, and Councilmember Holman voting no on item number nine.
I'm pulling number 14.
Yes, I'm pulling number 14.
We need a motion to approve?
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I'll second. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Fine absent.
Mr. Mayor, with the council's indulgence for a few minutes, I would like to introduce our new police chief, approval of the appointment by the council that you just voted on, Robert or Bob Johnson, who is here this evening. Appreciate the comments from Pastor Baines. And I would just share that we had an extremely competitive process, an outstanding pool of candidates, and a community staff and public safety and justice system, comprehensive panels who were involved in this selection process. And really is with great pleasure that I would like to introduce, Bob Johnson is Palo Alto's next police chief. He'll be starting his employment on January 9th. And Bob, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium here and introducing yourself to the council before you move on to your action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, obviously city staff. And I'd really like to extend my appreciation and thanks to the members of the community who are part of the recruitment process. I want to thank all of you for the honor you've bestowed on me by selecting me as the next chief for the Palo Alto Police Department. I will absolutely give my best to provide leadership and stability to a department full of amazing men and women who give their all and who truly care and want to serve this tremendous community every day with professionalism, integrity, and respect. And to the community members, as you can clearly see, I am not Dennis Burns. To state the obvious, I lack his height, and I clearly lack his full head of hair. But what I can assure you is that I have a heart of equal size, and I will engage with you as my predecessors have set as a standard and an expectation that I know all of you have for this great community. Public safety is something that requires teamwork within all its members. It does not fall upon one individual, one department. It takes a true community effort. So I will look forward to working with all of you for many years to come. Thank you.
And Chief Johnson, I just wanted to welcome you to Palo Alto and, you know, thank you for joining us and say I've heard great things about you and we look forward to your service.
Thank you.
Okay. Now for our first item, we're a little behind schedule.
Can you speak for numbers?
Oh, yeah, you know, I apologize. I got thrown off for that.
Thank you, Professor.
Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, so this is item 12, and it might actually be okay, but the main issue I have with it is the quality of the report. The quality of the report is, in my opinion, very lacking. The basis of this was to do a survey of nearby cities to understand how the pay compares here versus other cities. But in this report, which is only two pages, it fails to even do that. Nowhere in this report does it talk about, does it actually have the figures? So I was, I was very disappointed. The thing that really kind of made me pause is when I looked at, just like, let's say, a nearby city, Mountain View, and do the math, the basic math of how much is a dollar per employee, Palo Alto is number one in almost every single category. And to say that we're below 5% to 9% doesn't make sense to me. And so for me, I would like to see staff actually provide some figures, actually provide, if they did this survey report, they should provide it because it is, it is very counterintuitive to say that we're 5% to 9% below our neighboring cities, yet at the same time, if you do math with just about any other city, Menlo Park, Mountain View, other cities, we are way ahead. So for instance, for Fire, we are 296 per employee. Mountain View is at 284. Redwood City is at 228, right? So we're significantly ahead, not just by a little bit, but by a lot. So I would, I would appreciate to actually see if the survey was done as per the contract, to actually have it in there. The second thing is, last week we had our finance committee meeting. We looked at the long-range financial forecast, and, you know, revenue is roughly growing about 3%. Our expenses are growing between 2.3% and 3.7%. This means next year we'll have a $2.5 million structural deficit. And, you know, at the increases that we've been giving, Fire has been getting a 25% increase over this period of time, places 18%. The report talks about 2.5%, but it's 2.5% for six months. So that's equivalent to a 5% a year. So it's, the pay rates is greatly outstripping our city's capacity to actually pay for it. And so that's also very concerning. But the most disturbing part is that this report is, in my mind, totally lacking. And if the survey was done, why not give it to the council? Why not present the figures? Because it doesn't jive with what you see from, if you just do basic math, to other cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I'd like to vote on number nine because it is an amendment to a contract for design services having to do with the pedestrian bicycle bridge. This item was just in front of us a couple of weeks ago, and I'm troubled when we see disjointed considerations of things. So it seems to me either, you know, we ought to consider a half-million-dollar cost change, which is what this is basically, that we ought to see that in conjunction with the approvals that we considered just a couple of weeks ago. So again, it's not, it's not a show of not, of not having support for the, for the bridge. It's that, it's the procedural thing that we aren't considering the cost increases in conjunction with the item that we had in front of us two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now we come to our first action item, which is, oh my goodness, which is discuss and accept the draft 2018-2020 Sustainability Implementation Plan, key actions, et cetera. And, go ahead.
You're taking my award. Excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Niz, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about the next step in Palo Alto's sustainability journey, the 2018-2020 Sustainability Implementation Plan. Can I have the mouse, please? Thanks. So the goal of the session is to discuss and accept the plan. You see here the trajectory of the conversations that we've had to date. And we were with you to discuss a draft of this plan in June. You requested that we come back with something more focused. And in the ensuing months, several dozen staff people from multiple departments have worked on focusing the plan, supported by a three-year work plan that details the specific subactions, of which you're going to see the summary tonight, the timelines and the responsible departments by year over the next three years. Several of the staff members who've worked on this process are here tonight. Several of them will share in the presentation that we're making now. Others are available in the audience to answer your questions, should you have them. Here's just to, for memory refreshment and to set the context, is the trajectory that we've been on, going back to the baseline year of 1990, considerable reductions in greenhouse gas emissions from our carbon-neutral electricity program, our efficiency programs, green building programs, and many others. We now sit with our emissions about 34% to 36% below the baseline year. When we do the analysis for 2017, we anticipate we'll be somewhere between 40% and 54%, depending on how you count carbon offsets, and puts us on a trajectory to our 80% target by 2030. We think that it is largely within reach, significantly because of the rapid growth of electric vehicles, both in our community and around us. And I just want to note that even though the chart shows a straight line, we don't anticipate that these reductions are going to follow exactly on a straight line. We're not trying to manage to that line, but to the goal for 2030. You asked that we focus the SIP more tightly, and we thought the place to focus is on the two big issues of CO2 and H2O, greenhouse gas emissions and water resilience. And within those two focus areas, we've selected four of the 10 areas that we had identified in the prior draft of the, of the implementation plan: energy, electric vehicles, mobility, and water. And for each of them, we've outlined several key goals that we, that we think should guide the effort over the coming years. So let's take a look at each of these domains in turn with a key person from each lead department. You'll see two slides for each of these areas. They'll summarize kind of qualitative overview, the story, if you will, of our aspirations in that area, and then more specifics, looking at the key goals, the strategic moves that we'll make, the key actions that we'll need to undertake to achieve those goals, and the key performance indicators by which we will guide our efforts and enable you to track our progress.
Good evening. My name is Christine Tam. I'm a senior resource planner in the utilities department. So, can you hear me?
Give it a little closer to the camera.
Can you hear me better now? Okay, all right. So starting with the energy area, we have two focuses that we're talking about here. We're going to pursue all cost-effective energy efficiency, and we're also going to shift building energy use from natural gas to electricity where appropriate. So this is a collaborative effort between utilities department and development services department with the common goal of deeply reducing carbon emissions by making it easy for consumers to choose clean energy sources. Next slide, please. While natural gas is a fossil fuel and is hard to clean up the way that electricity can be cleaned up, we are using currently carbon offsets as a transitional measures to compensate for the city's energy usage in this area, just in the short term. To reduce natural gas use, we are continuing to push for more efficiency in buildings through voluntary rebates program and building mandates. And we'll target both new and existing building stock from the construction phase through ongoing operations of these buildings. Further reduction in gas usage will come from voluntary building electrification, and Palo Alto is the first mover in this area. We launched the heat pump water heater rebate program about a year ago, and since then we have developed a permitting process for replacing gas water heaters with electric heat pump water heaters. We are continuing to look at different ways to increase uptake of heat pump technologies by both residents and businesses. Obviously, electrification raises a number of questions that we still need to address, including the importance of resiliency as we rely more on electricity, the impact on our electric supply portfolio, as well as the impact of reduced gas sales on the gas utility. We will explore these areas through various utility strategic planning efforts currently in progress. And now, and now I will pass on to my colleague to address...
Mobility.
Mobility. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Josh Mello, the chief transportation official with the city. Mobility, mobility represents, mobility and transportation currently represent 66% of our greenhouse gas emissions in the city of Palo Alto. Our goal with this focus area is to leverage the growth of new mobility modes, but reduce the pain and the impacts of commuting. So this is a two-pronged approach where we're looking to address greenhouse gas emissions, but also reduce congestion and the impacts that congestion have on the community. The key goals in this focus area of mobility include reducing SOV travel and then making it more convenient to drive. And we've worked very closely with our folks in the sustainability office. To not drive, yes. We've worked very closely with the folks in the sustainability office to identify some key actions over the next three years. A lot of these are already in, in process through our group. These include fully funding the TMA. And, you know, you can call recently, you can recall recently this fiscal year, you've allocated the bulk of the permit fee increases downtown to help fund the TMA. We're also working to introduce technology that will bring what's called mobility as a service to fruition, starting with some projects involving city staff. We're continuing to build out our bicycle network, identified in the 2012 bike plan, and also strategically implement safety and mobility changes to roadways as roadways are resurfaced and through regular maintenance programs in other city departments. We'll be bringing forward a citywide bike share regulation early in 2018 to attempt to introduce some private sector operators in the city of bike share systems. And then we'll also be bringing forward some additional bikeway and shuttle programs and projects to address some of the first and last mile solutions that folks typically struggle with when trying to access transit. So some key performance indicators in this sector include the SOV commute mode share for employees within the city of Palo Alto. We'll also be tracking transit riderships on routes that serve Palo Alto, and also the rate of participation by employers in commuter, commuter benefit programs. So the basic approach here is to support and extend existing transportation services, make them more attractive, flexible, and responsive, and also encourage emerging new modes of transportation.
Thanks for that, Josh. Thank you, city council members and Vice Mayor and Mayor Scharf, for listening to our Sustainability Implementation Plan this evening. My name is Hillary Rupert, and I'm a sustainability consultant working on the EV front here at the city of Palo Alto. And our aspiration is to, our aspiration is to build on Palo Alto's early adoption of EVs to prepare for the continued shift that we'll see from, from moving from fossil fuels to electric vehicles. And what we'd like to be able to say is that Palo Alto has the most comprehensive program in the nation to make owning and operating an EV more convenient and economical than gasoline-fueled vehicles. Next slide, please. So let me set some context for you. As my colleague in mobility just mentioned, greenhouse gas emissions in Palo Alto are at 66%, and that measure was taken in 2016. And EVs are one of the key strategies that we can use to reduce those greenhouse gas emissions. Palo Alto has one of the highest, if not the highest, EV penetration rates in the United States. In 2015, more than 15% of all new vehicles purchased in Palo Alto were electric. In 2016, Palo Alto led the electric vehicle market share at 22%. And just to give you some regional context here, Los Altos was at 21%, and Saratoga was at 20%. And a lot of the other cities that we see in this region have very high adoption rates of electric vehicles. And based on the preliminary internal forecast modeling that we've done, we expect this trend to continue, not only in Palo Alto, but also regionally. And this will impact the number of inbound electric vehicles that are coming into this area for work or for shopping or for other activities. So our key goal, again, is to make EVs more convenient to drive, and our key strategies are really twofold on this. We want to build out public and private infrastructure to support the rising EV growth rate. We also want to explore and evaluate incentives, outreach policies, and financing options to stimulate the charging infrastructure and EV ownership and use. So far, we've seen some pretty good success. We've expanded public chargers. We've developed an electric vehicle fleet procurement policy. We've added a pricing policy for EV charging. We've provided rebates for EV infrastructure for businesses and organizations. We've held three very successful EV outreach events within the last year. We've held three very successful EV outreach events within the last year. One of them was at Palo Alto Earth Day. Another was with National Drive Electric Week. And then lastly, we held one in conjunction with the Stanford Health Improvement Program. We held an EV workshop in last October. So we've got some momentum going. We need to continue to build upon this momentum, and there are some key steps for how we can do this. First, we need to publicize streamlined permitting and provide some more information on California, or, sorry, city of Palo Alto funded transformer upgrades. We need to consider expanding EV readiness into existing buildings. We already see that in new infrastructure, but we can explore options of looking into existing buildings. We need to develop a business plan to expand upon EV charger deployment on private property, and this includes workplaces and multi-unit dwellings. Expand EV deployment in the city fleet. Consider expanding additional EV charging infrastructure, supporting regional group by programs, and based upon the regional context, this is something that we can definitely look at and consider. And then lastly, we'd like to continue to build upon the public awareness of electric vehicle options. And to achieve these actions, we'll need to have multi-departmental collaboration. We'll revitalize our electric vehicle task force, which will consist of internal engagement within the city of Palo Alto staff, and we'll also continue our external engagement with our key partners. We've identified two KPIs to track our progress. One is obviously the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, which we hope to see, as well as continued EV growth rate. And I just want to close this out by saying that I think right now Palo Alto has a real opportunity to inspire and lead on the EV frontier, and a lot of the other cities look to Palo Alto because they want to know what is Palo Alto doing? How can we model what Palo Alto is doing? How can we bring that into our city? And there's great potential here to also have national influence. And with that, I thank you very much for your time, and I'll pass you over to my colleague who will discuss the water portion of the implementation plan. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carla Daly. I'm a senior resource planner in utilities. Palo Alto's done a great job at conserving water over the past few years, particularly during the height of the drought, and our highest priority will still be the efficient use of water. But climate change and the shifting precipitation patterns that come with it led us to our aspirational goal of reducing our reliance on imported water and moving more toward a world where we're matching the right water quality with the right end-use of water as much as possible. In an ideal world, we would not be flushing our toilets with pristine, hetch-hetchy water. Clearly, that's not the best use of that resource. Next slide, please. Our three specific goals are to reduce consumption, ensure adequate supply, and protect our water resources. An important metric for us is going to be the increased use of our recycled water. Recycled water is a local, sustainable resource, and to the extent that we can reuse it as much as possible, we also go a long way toward protecting our bay. There are two projects I'd like to call your attention to. One is the Recycled Water Strategic Plan, on which we have been collaborating with the Santa Clara Valley Water District very closely. And when that plan is complete, we will be bringing recommendations to you regarding expanded use of recycled water as a non-potable resource, as well as looking out toward the future and exploring options for potable use of that water resource. The second thing that we will bring to you will be projects that will reduce the salinity of that recycled water, making it more appealing and expanding its use. We'll also be exploring ways to use non-traditional, non-potable water resources more fully, such as gray water and storm water. And again, storm water has that added benefit of protecting our bay as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And that, is there... Go on.
So that's the summary of the Sustainability Implementation Plan and work plan. On your screen, you have, again, a recap of the key performance indicators that are going to guide this work and provide a basis for evaluating our progress. The next steps following, hopefully, acceptance and adoption of this plan tonight will be to come back to council periodically over the next three years for the adoption of any individual key actions, you know, that we've just been over with you, any individual actions that might require council authorization for new policies or programs, or SEQA review, or other needs for council action. In FY19, we'll begin preparing the 2020 update of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, which, as you recall, was first begun in 2014. We'll update the framework and the implementation plans for the next coming years and SEQA review of the entire SCAP at that time, with an anticipation of an FY2020 coming to council with the SCAP and the companion SEQA review for formal adoption of the entire plan. Our recommendations to you tonight are to accept the 2018 to 2020 implementation plan and to find this action exempt from environmental review under SEQA guidelines. And that ends our opening presentation. We'd love to hear your questions and discussion.
All right. Thank you. We have a number of public speakers, I believe, right? So you want to put those on the board? We'll go to the publics. You'll each have two minutes, and we have twelve public speakers. The first one is Susan Stansberry.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. My name is Susan Stansberry. I live on Josina Avenue. Thank you for your commitment to sustainability and climate action. I'm very proud of our city for taking a leadership role in this crucial effort to ensure a livable future on our planet. I'm here tonight to not only laud our efforts, but also to ask you to take the additional step in divesting from fossil fuels. In reading through the guiding and design principles, divestment of city funds from fossil fuels is a complimentary and necessary step to meet our goals. Under the plan's guiding principles, it states, "Seek to improve quality of life as well as environmental quality, economic health, and social equity. Foster a prosperous, robust, and inclusive economy. Recognize Palo Alto's role as a leader and linkages with regional, national, and global community." When reading this, I think of our water protector friends out in North Dakota who non-violently and prayerfully stood up to the fossil fuel industry last year to stop the Dakota Access Pipeline from crossing the Missouri River. In the end, the current administration and the fossil fuel industry steamrolled over the rights of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe, and now their water is at risk. I stand with them in this request. Under design principles, it states, "Prioritize actions that are in the city's control, recognizing that we can urge others to join us by leading by example, but leading by example is most effective. Align incentives. Ensure that investment of public resources encourage what we want and discourage what we don't want." We want clean energy. Let's align our financial resources with that desire. All of our efforts in the Climate Action Plan can be overshadowed by continuing to fund the fossil fuel infrastructure. Unfortunately, it's a wise economic decision, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Cedric de la Bojardere, and then Ava Lindstrom and David Page.
Hello. Good evening, council, mayor. I also support the sustainability implementation before you, plan before you today, though I do note, as Susan said, that there is no, does not appear to be any consideration of aligning our investment strategies with our social and environmental values. Such an, such an effort should be added to the plan. So in support of that goal, I also support you to direct staff to divest all city investments from fossil fuels, and I hope you'll execute this action quickly and not tie it up in the prolonged Palo Alto deliberation process. This is an easy step in support of the city's sustainability and climate protection goals, and it is in line with the city's fiscal, environmental, and social values. It's fiscally responsible, given the likelihood of stranded assets for fossil fuels, where they have large petroleum reserves, which must not be burned if we're to meet our overt climate disaster. Environmentally, it's in the interest of the city due to our susceptibility to drought and sea level rise and other climate impacts. And then socially, it makes sense, given Palo Alto's commitment to community engagement, which is in glaring contrast to the petroleum industry's disregard for community and violence towards people who peacefully try to stop these actions from impacting their communities. So there's been extreme cases of violence, both here in Dakota, as well as in Canada's boreal forests, in the Amazon, in the Niger Delta, just to name a few. So thank you for your service and for doing the right thing, which I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Ava Lindstrom, to be followed by David Page.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ava Lindstrom, and I didn't mean to do that. Hi, I'm Ava Lindstrom. I'm a Palo Alto resident, and I live right by the California Avenue Caltrain Station. Before we consider the good that we can do with these environmental initiatives, I think it's appropriate that we look at the harms we are already engaged in, however inadvertently. Right now, Palo Alto has more than $5 million banked with financial institutions that fund the fossil fuel industry, including the Dakota Access Pipeline and the extraction of tar sands. In fact, of the six top U.S. banks that fund tar sands extraction, Palo Alto has financial ties to four of those. Therefore, I call on Mayor Scharf and the Palo Alto City Council to divest all funds from and sever all financial ties to any bank or institution that funds the fossil fuel industry. We have many, many alternatives here in Palo Alto, and we are lucky to have so many alternative, innovative institutions that don't require funding this dangerous industry. We owe it to the young people of Palo Alto, to the victims of the California wildfires, and to the indigenous people on whose lands we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. David Page, to be followed by Stephen Rosenblum.
Hello again. I'm back. I was just complaining about the net metering, and I appreciate the very rapid response by your staff to explain the nuances of the situation. I wanted to take a moment to complain a little bit more. I apologize about the pollution and the emissions that are going into the atmosphere. I see a lot of plans and goals, targets, and processes, and strategies being outlined. I don't see enough infrastructure in Palo Alto: solar panels, electric chargers, wind turbines, et cetera. Hopefully, we're moving in that direction, but it's too small and too slow for the death and destruction that's already happened. I wanted to finish, however, on a positive note. There's good news that I learned today. The mayor of San Francisco, Ed Lee, announced for the first time that he supports divestment for the San Francisco Employees Retirement System from fossil fuels. And that's a big step that he's taken, and hopefully, the pension board trustees are going to follow through with that. Thank you.
Stephen Rosenblum, to be followed by Andrew Boone.
Good evening, council members. I'm here also to talk about the issue of divestment. I would strongly urge the council to consider adding a divestment principle to the sustainability plan. And I refer you to the, one of the guiding principles, which is, quote, "Recognize Palo Alto's role as a leader and linkages with regional, national, and global community." And then also from the SIP design principles, quote, "Prioritize actions that are in the city's control, recognizing that we urge others to join us, but leading by example is most effective." And also, quote, "Align incentives. Ensure that subsidies, if any, and other investment of public resources encourage what we want and discourage what we don't want." I strongly urge you to add a design principle to the SIP that requires the city to invest its money in line with these principles. We cannot solve climate change with local effort alone. Ignoring the Palo Alto's hundreds of millions of dollars of investments to encourage the elimination of fossil fuels is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Boone, to be followed by Melanie Lu.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Boone. I also agree that if the city is serious about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, then we cannot be investing our money in the extraction of fossil fuels elsewhere. That's exactly the opposite of reducing the use of fossil fuels. Many other jurisdictions are considering or have already divested from these polluting fossil fuels, and it's Palo Alto's responsibility to do so next. I also think that there are other actions that you are taking or have, you have made decisions that undermine the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, such as the construction of two new car parking garages in Palo Alto at a total cost of $57 million. Those were approved in April. It was a terrible decision. You're trying to reduce the use, the dependence on single occupancy vehicles for people coming into downtown and coming into the Calab Business District, but then you're encouraging people to drive into those areas by providing more parking. Those projects should be canceled, and that land should be used to build housing for people. House people, not cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Lu, to be followed by Patty Regan.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me okay? Better? Okay. Thank you. So I'm with the alliance and solidarity with Standing Rock. We have about 200 Palo Alto residents who have signed a petition asking the city to divest its money from financiers of pipelines, including, most egregiously, the Dakota Access Pipeline and the tar sands pipelines. In addition to that, about 250 other individuals who, many of whom work in this city or study in this city, worship in this city, have also signed the petition, which I'll be sending to you, the signatures. I believe that we need in this city a triple bottom line, financial bottom line, to go in conjunction with the social and environmental bottom line. This will bring us into harmony and have the left hand working together with the right. We have about $14 million invested in the Tennessee Valley Authority, and since a petition was launched three years ago by residents here, led by Steve Rosenblum, we have almost doubled our investments in Tennessee Valley Authority. So I think our very capable finance staff, they are interested to be in alignment with what the other departments are doing for climate change, but maybe they need some assurances from city council that it is okay to not be involved, invested in TVA that operates eight fossil fuel plants, including coal and 16 natural gas plants, which is fracked gas. If we sold our TVA investments today, we, the 14 million, we could sell for a $10,000, $7,000 profit, the difference between the book value and the market value.
Can I give her my minutes?
Thank you.
The next $15,000, my minutes. Can you do that?
Patty Regan.
No, I'm saying, can you give my minutes?
No, she can't. We don't do that. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm Patty Reger, and I, first of all, I want to say thank you for all the staff and everybody doing the electric cars and stuff, but I also want to say I'm kind of embarrassed about your behavior, drinking out of bottled water when we're talking about sustainability, all of you, your role models. Some of you are drinking out of bottled water. You're pouring it into your glasses. That's one thing that you guys can do, be good role models. And second of all, most of you have been looking at your iPads, walking out. At one point, four of you walked out and left when someone was speaking, and I think that's the least thing that you can do to prove, I mean, I am very embarrassed about your behavior, that you were doing that. You're not supposed to be drinking bottled water during a system, I mean, you have water and you have glasses. But my point is tonight is we've met with some of you, city council members, about sustainability and divesting in fossil fuels, and I think that you should take this a little bit seriously because the city of Santa Monica is doing it, Davis, Seattle, and I'm summing up. I'm just saying that I hope you take a little bit more consideration in what our speakers are talking. are talking about in your actions. Thank you.
David Cole, to be followed by Geraldine Moran.
Hello, Mayor, city council and staff. I'm here to support the updated SIP program. I think we need to move forward judiciously and very quickly on this. As we have seen, climate change actually moves faster than most governments can in terms of addressing it, so I hope you approve this right away. I would like to echo the comments made by Andrew Boon in that the parking garages are in direct conflict with everything that stands for sustainability. This is where the general comp plan and the SIP are 180 degrees out of phase. And I think that during the discussion of the garages, there is no discussion of sustainability. There's a parking consultant hired, which is great. You got a parking solution. But what we need to do is to, you know, with the money saved on those garages, which we can't afford anyway, we could fully fund the TMA, the SIP, and all the bike ped projects and have money left over. Or, as Andrew Boon suggested, we should build affordable housing. Now, it might sound innovative to redesign the garages for reuse, but this is a terrible waste of money. The garages won't be realized, your reuse will only be more expensive in the end, so please reconsider these garages. I know it's difficult to revisit an issue that's already been passed, but it might be very difficult to explain to our neighbors, our sister cities, and everything else why we can't execute the SIP because we're building millions of dollars of parking garages. Thank you very much.
Geraldine Moran, to be followed by Brett Anderson.
I'll try to be very brief. My name's Geraldine Moran. I'm a resident here in Palo Alto. I applaud all the work and everyone that has worked really hard on the implementation plan and the associated SCAP, but I feel a responsibility to bring up one specific item and one more overreaching item. And number one, I'm very concerned that, as two of my fellow community members have already spoken of, the parking garages that are still in the works are a big problem for me. It's conflicting with what we're trying to do, and I'm very concerned, and I know it will be difficult to turn around, but it's worth it. It really, we are a model for so many other communities. We just can't be building parking for single occupancy vehicles potentially and still be able to look in the face of everyone who's looking at us for guidance into this future where we have climate change staring at us right now. There just isn't time for this, and we can use that money for much, much more sustainable things. The second, really quick, is climate change, as you know, is here and it's now. Divestment by the city is imperative for the same reasons. People are looking to us for, as a model, and they're just, there's a time urgency here for both of these things I'm talking about, and I applaud you as a city guide, and I implore you to follow up with divestment. Thank you.
Brett Anderson, to be followed by Estrin Naginda.
Good evening, honorable council members. Brett Anderson, I'm speaking on behalf of Carbon Free Palo Alto. I'm going to read from kind of a late-arriving memo that we sent to council. Carbon Free Palo Alto welcomes the Sustainable Implementation Plan. It's a large improvement over the last version of the plan. We find it much leaner, more focused, and easy to comprehend, and we look forward to seeing more specific details in the very near future from staff concerning key actions and their impact and comparisons on the scale of those actions in each of them. We're hopeful that the progress of climate mitigation will accelerate in this city. For the last four years, we've seen pretty tepid progress on eliminating our local emissions from fossil fuel use, despite the fact that we have a very aggressive goal, 80% reduction by 2030, and we have a community that has a pretty large appetite for solutions in this area. So, we're hoping to see a lot of breakthrough movement now that we have a SIP that's taking form. Finally, regarding the challenge before us, I wanted a quote from Bill McGivern, who is from 350.org, and reminds us all that winning is losing slowly when it comes to climate change. So, all the years that we delay, we are making it more costly and more difficult to reduce in time to mitigate the coming threat. So, thank you for taking responsibility for our local emissions and moving forward as fast as we can to reduce our carbon footprint in Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Estrin Naginda?
Good evening, council members and members of the public. I am thrilled that our city is addressing sustainability and would like to see the water-energy nexus explicitly included. In California, 20% of our energy is used in the water sector. This energy is used in pumping, transporting, purifying, and distributing the water. Safe Palo Alto's groundwater believes that if we use best practices for construction dewatering, not only will we save water, we will reduce our energy consumption and thus contribute to reducing our greenhouse gases. It fits in, right in with the Sustainability Plan and with its goals of reducing consumption of potable water, protecting our sources, of which groundwater is one, and ensuring adequate supply. I had some slides, but with the two-minute limit, I'm going to skip it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we return to council, and for questions, comments, motions, et cetera. We're a little behind time. We've still got to get to the second item, so hopefully, we can do this in an hour. Councilmember Walbach.
Thank you very much to staff and also for every member of the public who came to speak and share their views with us. This is an incredibly important item. I just had a couple of questions in the staff report on, actually, in the Attachment A, packet page 224, page three of 10 of Attachment A. In the second paragraph, it talks about financing strategies.
So, just, Corey, where are you again?
It's packet page 224.
224, okay.
So, it's Attachment 15A, that, and there's a list of remaining SCAP areas to come forward in the future. One of them is financing strategies, and I was, it's the Sustainability Implementation Plan Key Action, it's our key attachment of the evening.
Page three of 10.
Page three of 10. So, the second paragraph, there's a list of items separated by semicolons, of items that would come forward, I guess, in the future. One of them is financing strategies. There's been a lot of discussion over the last year, including this evening, about divestment from fossil fuels, and I was wondering if that might be covered by that item.
It could be. It wasn't in the prior draft that you folks saw in June that was mostly addressing how do we pay for the activities that are specified in the SCAP and the SIP, but that could be a place where that item could be addressed.
Okay.
It certainly ties in with the, you know, with the language that you folks have already approved about ensuring that our investments are in line with our values and aspirations. So, that would be a place, perhaps, to take that up.
And what kind of timeline would you envision that moving forward currently?
Currently, we're focused on these four areas in response to your request in June that we narrow. I think we want to get those secure, and then as we move into the planning for the next year, we'll see which of these we can start to take up. And, you know, some of these efforts are already underway in existing work plans, and so those will proceed. To the extent that they're new and require resourcing, we'll bring them back to you for discussion. And certainly, in a case like this, where there's a policy implication, we'll want to support a discussion for council on that.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to move the staff recommendation with one change, or one addition, rather. So, it would be Part C, which would be to direct staff to return to council in early 2018 for discussion of divestment from fossil fuels.
Second.
To speak to the motion, first, I'll actually just tackle the fossil fuel one that I just added first, and then talk about the general SIP, and I'll try to keep it pretty brief because I know we are running behind, and I appreciate the mayor keeping, reminding us of that. As I mentioned, you know, a lot of us have been talking about divestment for many months, some even years. We've had a great number of residents and other people who are affiliated with the city calling for this. Other cities in California and the country have divested from fossil fuels. I do know that it won't be an easy thing for our, for our financial staff to do. It will be complex, which is why I can't, in good conscience and respect for our staff, I can't direct tonight that we just do the divestment.
Sure.
Because there's going to be some steps to make, to make sure it happens.
Yeah.
But it is time to move that conversation forward, and I think that, you know, we've had some informal conversations over the last year, but I think it's time for formal council direction to staff to really move this conversation forward, to figure out exactly what the challenges would be and what the timeline would be to have a full divestment of our financial interests from all fossil fuels. And I really want to just extend my gratitude to everybody in the community, not only who came out tonight or have signed petitions, but who've made their voices heard over the many months and even years about this issue. You have been heard.
Mm-hmm.
On the SIP in general, I really think, as a couple members of the public or several, I think, had pointed out, this is a much cleaner, simpler, focused document. Aside from that, the one addition that I've suggested, I think that this really does focus us in some good directions. A couple of things I want to point out that I think are really important, and I think we'll explore in great detail, you know, in greater detail over time. On packet page 228 and 231, it talks about protecting creeks. If I remember correctly, I think that's in our coordinated area, sorry, in our comprehensive plan as well. I think that that's really important, and I look forward to more discussion about what protecting our creeks will look like. On the question of parking structures that was raised, I don't want to add anything into this motion at this time, but the issue of where we make our investments, the issue of what that means when our infrastructure plan is already way over budget, and whether we ought to revisit perhaps scaling back at least one of our parking structures, or doing something that would make it less environmentally sensitive, impactful, and less expensive, such as not going two floors below ground, but maybe just going even only one floor below ground. I think at least those modest modifications, if it's not too late to have those conversations, might be part of the conversations we have when staff brings back to us discussions about our infrastructure plan and our challenges about paying for them. But I'm not going to add that to the motion now.
Thank you. I just made a quick comment. We'll be back at the end of January before the council on the infrastructure plan funding issues, et cetera.
Yeah, and that's why I'm not adding it here. On the question of EVs, I just wanted to ask staff, you know, what must we do and what can we do on the council and what can the community do to help support making sure that our electrical infrastructure in Palo Alto, as part of a larger grid and also locally with our own utility, is really prepared for a massive growth in EV adoption and making sure that at any peak demand times, we don't have any problems with supplying and sustaining EV charging throughout the city as adoption rates hopefully skyrocket. Does, I don't know if staff wants to weigh in on that at all, or have any comments they want to share about just how we will prepare our electrical grid in Palo Alto for EVs?
Sure. A call to your attention for the council, a couple of ongoing efforts. First, perhaps no surprise, but we are planning for it.
Great.
And the work is well underway. Jonathan Abencine's group has been working on what we're referring to as our DER Plan, Distributed Energy Resource Plan, of which encompasses solar, EVs, storage, and the kinds of investments that individual residents, property owners, are making both into their properties as well as the community as a whole. And they're both customer-side implications of that, as well as system, utility-side components of that. And that work, again, is well underway. We're in discussions with the Utility Advisory Commissions on the specifics of that, including our next steps related to community outreach, to get some reality checks, so to speak, on the barriers and priorities that our community is seeing, and use that as the basis for what we will come back to the council with as a follow-on to our strategic plan within the Utilities Department.
Great.
So, if I missed any of that, or if they'd like to expand, then staff, welcome to do so.
Well, that answered my question, so don't feel obligated. I feel confident that we're focused on that issue and addressing that concern proactively. I also just wanted to call out Mobility Item 7. It talks about housing strategies, you know, in our colleague's memo about looking more carefully and being more creative with our housing zoning in order to address some of the cost issues around housing. This issue of maybe decoupling parking from housing units, which would potentially reduce the cost of a housing unit by 60 or so thousand dollars, that's something that is already going to be coming forward in the new year, and so I'm glad to see that overlap between sustainability and also our affordability issues. You know, a lot of these things do overlap. A lot of these do cut across multiple issues, and if we can find solutions that do work, could have multiple positive impacts. One other thing I just want to mention about electric vehicles, I do really want to encourage us to keep really thinking about electric bicycles and skateboards, electric scooters and electric motorcycles, and thinking about how the charging works for each of those, right? Where can people charge an electric scooter, skateboard, bicycle, or motorcycle as those become more adopted over time? So, with that, all of my comments. Thank you very much. I think we're really heading in the right direction.
All right, I'm going to speak to my second. First of all, I want to thank Gil for his hard work on this. I know Gil has worked really hard on this, and I want to say I think it's a good job. I think it's, you know, hits the nail on the head mostly, and I think we should recognize you for your hard work.
Mayor Scharf, thank you very much for that.
[applause]
And thank you, folks, but I really want to extend that thank you to the staff team that has worked on this. This has been a group effort of multiple departments and, as I said, a couple of dozen people, with many, many cycles of trying to find the right balance and consensus and engagement, so that this really becomes a plan of the entire city organization, not just the Sustainability Office. So, thank you. I'll accept the thanks on behalf of that team.
Great. So, I did have some questions, and some of them are sort of in the weeds and some are not. So, I'm going to start with my weedy question, which is really, one of the things that strikes me is that we should be trying to reduce any methane sources in Palo Alto, given that methane is what, 17 times, you probably know better, whatever it is, than carbon. And is there a place to address that? I mean, is that something we should put in here? Or do we not? Is it so de minimis that it's irrelevant? And I just really wanted to raise that question.
Let me take a first. Let me take--
A first. I don't mean the city, I mean, like, if there's, you know, stuff rotting, it's reducing methane, or if there's city things that reduce methane, or, you know, I'm just really concerned about it.
Well, let me take a first answer, and then maybe some folks from Utilities and Public Works would supplement this. I understand that there are two primary sources of methane in our community. One is natural gas, natural gas leakage, if you will, and the other is decaying organic matter and landfill. We're addressing the landfill matters, as we've talked about many times before, and the electrification strategy is one of the ways of reducing our dependence on natural gas and thus the possibility of leakage from that. We recognize that part of the footprint of natural gas includes the life cycle impacts, leakage in the entire supply chain from wellhead to our use, which is why natural gas is a serious concern, and those are the two measures, as I understand, the two primary measures that we're undertaking to deal with that. Anybody want to add to that from Utilities and Public Works? Or is that, I guess we're good. Bill?
Just to reassure you that we're doing everything that state-of-the-art and technology allows us to do to try to prevent what we call fugitive emissions of methane from the old 129-acre landfill. So, we have an extensive system of pipes underground that you don't see when you go to our new fancy Bixby Park, but there is an extensive collection-- to our new fancy Bixby Park, but there is an extensive collection system under there and it's shuttled over to the regional water quality control plant where we use that methane gas. Now, in the process of extracting that and getting it to the regional water quality control pan, plant, there are losses in that pipeline system, just like there are losses in our own distribution system, as Gil alluded to. So those are the two main sources and we spend an awful lot of time and energy making sure all of those distribution systems are state-of-the-art. But there are, there are losses there. They pale by comparison with respect to the transport, the CO2 from transportation.
And Phil, while I have you up here, just thought I could just ask some questions about methane. I know it's a little off topic, but you know, those, those bins we have, I think they're the green bins where we recycle things. I've noticed a lot of people leave their stuff in there for a long time because they haven't filled it up before having it. And then I noticed it starts to rot and I was wondering if that was a source of methane. I don't know if it is. I was noticing that, you know, people do a lot of composting, that there are piles of leaves sent to rot, they get wet. We have, we have lots of cows grazing on the, on the fields. I, I was just sort of curious if.
Yeah. We wanted to talk to you about those cows that you have out back, you know?
Greg.
Exactly. But when you get to the agricultural area, it's definitely a major source. Emissions from the 10,000 head lots in the Central Valley are an important source. In Palo Alto, we, we don't, I don't have a numeric for you on the decaying matter in our green bins. My sense it would be very, very small again compared to CO2 from transportation, but I have to be honest, we, we don't have a, a numeric I can give you on that.
Okay, now for my specific question. So if we could go to page seven of 10, which is packet page 228. So this is a two-year SIP, right? And you're going to come.
Well, three-year, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty. You're going to come back to us in three years?
Yes.
Okay. So this seems a little nitpicky, but it struck me we're under goal, the goal should be, or are we not planning on changing the goals? Are we just planning? Do the, if, do the goals last all the way or are we going to come back and look at, are these short-term goals or long-term goals?
These are going to last all the way.
Okay.
They may, they may modify a bit as we go, both as we accomplish things and learn from the initial programs, but those are, those goals are oriented to the overall trajectory through 2030. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful because otherwise I was going to say, if this is a three-year goal, mitigating the impacts of natural gas through carbon offsets in the short term and electrification in the mid to long term, wouldn't make sense as a short-term goal.
Right.
So this is, so we expect these goals to stay the same throughout that. So one of the things you did, and I appreciate the little, the little gray box at the bottom, talks about that, you know, oh, how'd you put it? I thought it was really good, actually. Um, yes, it says, you know, followed by electrification by water, heating, space, cooling, clothes drying and cooking, we're practical and cost-effective.
Yep.
So I appreciate that. I actually thought we should put in the goals because that reflects what we're looking at, which is mitigate the impacts of natural gas through carbon offsets in the short term and electrification, I think we should say, we're practical and cost-effective because I think cost is an issue here.
Yeah.
And I think that's what the plan was.
It's, it's, it's a fair point, Mayor Scharf. Our assumption has been that those criteria apply to everything in the plan. So rather than specify that for each action item, our assumption is that everything here has to meet the test of practicality and cost effectiveness or it doesn't fly.
So where does it say that in an overarching thing? Maybe I missed it. I mean, I would just like to see it somewhere in the plan so that when people look at this between now and 2030, when someone says, this is our goal, someone else says, well, you know, that would cost so much money, it's not practical.
I'm, I'm, I'm certain that it's in the SCAP. I think it's in the SIP and I don't know if I can find it fast while we're flipping pages here.
So why don't, why don't we continue talking and maybe you could have one of your staff members or someone look for it and.
Okay.
Allay my fears on that at some point.
Sure.
Because I, I did have a concern about that.
But that is, that is the very clear understanding of all of us.
Does Phil know where it is?
I don't.
But he's up there for a diversion.
I'm up there, that's right. It's to allow Gil to continue to search for it. I just wanted to remind council that while Gil correctly stated that the, let's say you're in the water area where there were three goals. So those three goals, we expect to be goals, although you could modify them the next time you see this in 2020, we expect those three goals to continue on to the end of the plan. But I did want to remind you that you have almost a year ago approved a framework, a document we called the framework, and it contained goals. And in some of these areas, that number of goals was larger than this number of goals.
Yeah.
Why? Because this is just a three-year implementation plan. So we picked out those goals that primarily related to this three-year period. But just so you didn't catch us on this in the future, Greg, we have, you have approved a larger set of goals for that longer time period as well, and you did that when you approved the framework.
Okay. I appreciate that. So then another little nitpicky thing under Mobility. One of our key actions is use parking management strategies, including dynamic pricing to support transportation and sustainability goals. Our motion on that was that we were going to explore that and you were going to come back to council with that stuff. So we haven't made the decision to use parking management strategies. We probably will end up there, but now is not the time to make that decision since the last council action on that was actually to explore it. So I think we should instead say, explore using parking management strategies.
Sure.
I just think that's, and I just want to make sure that's okay with the maker of the motion.
That was our intention there. I think you, you see that we've got that sort of verbiage for most of the items. I think we just.
You do. I think it was just a typo and you missed it.
I think it's an oversight, but yes, we'll put that in.
Does that need to go in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Then why don't you suggest the amendment and.
Well, the amendment is simply to add, explore using parking management strategies as opposed to use.
I'm fine with that. Just make sure the court gets it. Yeah, that's fine with me. I just want to make sure we, we capture it properly.
So on, on electric vehicles, you know, I'm thinking about what actually will, will make this happen. And I realize that you have a value person to expand and be charged on private property, including rebates and financing options, et cetera. I think the one thing that would do it is basically forcing multifamily housing, be it condominiums or apartments, to put some charging in for residents. I don't know how we do that, but that's actually the, that's actually what's going to be the problem. I mean, if you want to buy it, I mean, everything else we do, you know, we own an EV, you know, I'd say 99% of the time I just charge it at night at my house, right? If you own a single-family house. If you're living in an apartment.
Yes.
And there's no charger there, that's when it's a hassle.
Uh huh.
Right? And that's, that's the real impediment. So I, I think more than anything else, and I know we sort of dance around a lot of it in the, in the key actions.
Well, I think we, I think we address it specifically in the key actions number two and three, but to your point, the, the, the guiding strategy on this is that multifamily housing and workplace charging are the priorities. That's where we think the big leverage is. You know, we currently require EV readiness in new construction and so the thought here is to explore requiring EV readiness in existing structures with multifamily housing being one of the priorities there.
Okay, and that's really what I wanted, because it just says existing buildings. And I, I wanted to focus it really on multifamily housing and I wanted to know that that would at some point come back to us.
Yes.
That's really, and that's what staff was planning on. And then on water, which is on page, packet page 231. So this might be a little bit hard to get across. I, I think the important thing with water is to use it efficiently, not necessarily just to reduce consumption. And I wanted you to think about it like this. Our canopy, for instance, is really important to us. What's really important is that we water those trees in an efficient manner that doesn't waste water. I would not want us, for instance, to say, we are going to reduce the consumption of water and stress those trees because yeah, they'll survive and maybe their lifespan will be shortened, but we can reduce the consumption. So what I'm really trying to say is in those areas of the city where we are using water efficiently, we should not be reducing or pushing people to reduce consumption. What we should be doing is pushing everyone to use water efficiently. And the argument you might say is, well, we might end up with climate change in an area of prolonged drought. And I would say, at the very least, that may force us then, for instance, to clean our water at the wastewater treatment plants so that it becomes potable. At that point, you're using that water and that, that water then should be used efficiently. But what we shouldn't really think of doing is saying, reducing water beyond where we are using it efficiently unless we are in a drought situation. And if that happens, we should come up with new supplies.
Yeah.
So I, I think the goal of reduced water consumption, I actually think it should be use water efficiently, but I guess I could live with, you know, reduce pot, potable water consumption if you thought that was better. But I really wanted to capture.
That's certainly the intent there and as Carly Daly talked about, matching water quality with the needs of water use is one of the ways that we get at that, just to move away from using potable water for uses that don't require that level of water quality. That starts to get, I think, at what you're raising here.
It does and that's why I was, I was concerned about it. And I, so I'm really concerned about the goal there because I think it's too simplistic to just say reduce water consumption. And I, I didn't want to suggest something off the top of my head. I actually want to, I mean, I could suggest use water efficiently, but I, I was looking really for a suggestion from staff of how to capture that concern I have.
Well, I think you, you offered one possible suggestion, which would be to say, reduce potable water consumption.
I could do that.
That might be one way at that. Would you want to offer any other approaches to that?
Yeah, I'm not sure just calling out potable water gets to what you're talking about exactly.
So it is water efficiently, though.
Yeah, I think it is. And yeah, I don't want to wordsmith it here at the podium, but I, I hear what you're saying. And certainly the intent was never to starve trees of water or any other.
I mean, I could think of not just.
Which is why we added the third goal here of protecting canopy creeks, groundwater in the bay to make that explicitly a concern, but we maybe don't have the language quite right.
All right. And then, so then on the key actions.
Could I just add something on that, Greg?
Sure.
I would say the way we're reviewing these goals is that they're sort of not independent and you have to read them all. So Gil just pointed out the third one. So you'd, you'd reduce consumption, but you'd not do it in such a way that you violate our third goal there, which is to protect the canopy, right?
So using the canopy as an example, I could probably come up with other examples of where people are efficiently using water. And, you know, reducing consumption will damage something or some value that we hold. And that's the concern is that, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to just say that's, and the question is what is the goal here? Is the goal just to reduce water consumption or is it to use water efficiently? I believe it should be use water efficiently. So I guess I would move that we change the goal to use water efficiently.
You're talking about the first goal on page 10 of 10, packet page 231?
Yes.
You know, I, I don't think it needs to be changed. I would be more open to a change like reduce inefficient water consumption.
Well, I'm fine with that if that's the goal. I mean, I.
Does, I, I'm looking to staff if we add, if, if instead of that, the one proposed by the mayor, if we added the word inefficient between reduce and water, so it's a reduce inefficient water consumption, would that undermine the goal that's envisioned here? I'm looking to staff for any confirmation verbally.
I think what you're suggesting is better. I'm fine with it. That's, I think that captures it.
Okay. I just want to be very careful because I know a lot of time is spent thinking about these.
So we'll add the word inefficient, not the word potable, but the word inefficient?
Right. Right. So it would be, so we.
Reduce inefficient water consumption.
Right. Let's make sure it's been captured. So yeah, there's no replace, just great.
Okay.
Perfect.
And if, I'm going to move on to someone else now, but if we could just get back to where the cost-effective is somewhere in the SIP. Whenever you find it.
Well, rather than if we don't have it, why don't you just tell us to put it in?
Oh, okay. I would just like to tell them to put it in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, the language would be that, that staff add the concept of, well, where was it? To add the concept of, and the language is not, I'm not holding it in any language, but it is to, we're practical and cost-effective.
Yes.
Which is. So I'm not on any page. I'm just copying their language from the bottom of page seven of 10.
I know it's in here.
So.
Staff said this is inherent throughout.
Yeah, I don't know if it's where, would, could we more correctly say as practically and cost-effective as possible? I mean, there may be a situation where we could have a debate about it, but you think the return on investment is still worthwhile.
That's fine. I just think that concept needs to be in here.
Yeah, the, in the SCAP, one thing I found is that this is talking about a portfolio of measures that show net positive financial benefit. That's one way of the cost-effectiveness, but I think, I think the specific language you're asking for is here somewhere. I'm still looking for it.
Okay. So if, the motion would be to add, to put that in there the way you stated it.
Yeah.
If it's not already in there.
Okay. Right. We could just say, ensure that, ensure that the SCAP includes the concept so that they might not need to add it if it's there.
Correct.
So we just say, ensure that includes this concept.
Correct. Okay. And that finishes my concerns.
That's fine.
Vice Mayor Ness.
So let me, let me go back to the EVs, which we had a discussion on with, with Cory. And way back in August, we had a discussion at the utilities, utilities meeting and at the bottom of the page, which you probably don't have in front of you, but there's a question from council member Phil Seth asking, what keeps people in Palo Alto from buying electric vehicles? And you have gone through this tonight and said that actually, we rank very high, if not the highest in the Bay Area with electric vehicles, at three or four percent, correct? That's what your, that's what your figures say.
Yeah. About, about 2,500 vehicles currently, we think.
Who's our EV person? Is that you, Ed? So, so.
I could be.
So I think, I think that that was a really good question. It says staff would be exploring that through a survey. An example of something he believed was a significant barrier was a significant, was the difficulty of residents in condos or apartments to install charging infrastructure and multifamily housing, which is what Greg just addressed, but said, we need to make that something easier to install or in, in some way expedite that. So talk about, talk about that in terms of what you discussed with EVs tonight because a penetration of three or four percent doesn't still sound very high.
So I guess I'm not understanding your question. Are you wanting to know more about the infrastructure plans for multi-unit dwellings or are you asking?
Right, exactly. Yes, that's, that's just what this addresses.
Yeah, so we do know that one of the barriers to entry in, in the area is the lack of EV chargers on, in multi-unit dwellings. At homeowners, it's very easy for folks to purchase EVs and to just plug in at home. It gives them a sense of comfort. There's not a lot of range anxiety, but in a multi-unit dwelling with, where there aren't EV chargers, folks are a bit hesitant to purchase EVs simply because they don't have that comfort of being able to charge at home overnight. And so part of what we need to do is explore getting the infrastructure. And I do like this idea of determining how to potentially require that, getting that infrastructure into the multi-unit dwellings.
But under, under strategic moves, which you have on page nine of 10, it says to build out public and private infrastructures to support and so on. So what was your plan for doing that? This talks about four to six thousand EVs by 2020.
Right, it's looking at the permitting process. It's determining how to contact the owners of the property or do you go through the, I mean, it really gets into the weeds on, on how to, to build this out.
So give me just an example of what, one way that you would go about doing that. Here comes Peter to your rescue.
Oh, is Peter, you can rescue me? Come and rescue me, Peter.
Because this, it's very easy for us to say what we really need are more charging stations in apartments, condos, whatever that may be. But I want to know, what, what is that pathway to that?
Peter Pernod, Development Services Director, maybe I can shed some light. So the council in there was them, what, three years ago, four years ago, Mayor Scharf was mayor previously instituted a, a focus on how to turn the tide on new buildings. And we went through a comprehensive stakeholder engagement effort. And we went through a comprehensive stakeholder engagement effort over a period of about six months. First, we looked at single-family homes, and then we broadened our perspective and looked at all homes. And by 2014, the council approved that all new construction, whether it be single-family, multifamily, et cetera, be plumbed to remove barriers and become future-proof for electric vehicles. So what we've talked about since then, if the council recalls, is re-engaging that stakeholder engagement effort after the council has given us direction to do so, and explore ways to trigger upgrades on existing buildings. Now, existing buildings are a little harder, because you've got existing infrastructure, and we realized through our cost-effectiveness analysis that that's the biggest lift, is trying to get the infrastructure in those buildings, the panels, the conduit, et cetera, to code, to be able to install these things. So what we're going to be doing, hopefully with the council's direction, is reinstitute those panel of experts in the electric charging space, in the construction space, property managers, contractors, et cetera, to see what potential triggers we can impose as part of the building code cycle, or even in advance of when the building code comes, comes for renewal, to require that those properties upgrade when they hit a proper, an appropriate permit, for example, an electric upgrade.
But primarily, we're talking about retrofitting.
Retrofitting, of course.
We have built very little within the last two to three years.
Right.
So even though we had that requirement, I think, you know, we have any number of buildings in the city that would have to be retrofitted. So you're going to bring a group back together again, talk about ways you could expedite that?
Right.
Hopefully keep the price down?
Correct.
And so forth?
They would have to, we'd look at ways where it logically makes sense to be cost-effective, to be as little lift as possible for these existing apartments. We wouldn't want to displace anybody or cause any kind of financial hardship, so we'd want to make, make it appropriate when, when they're doing appropriate types of upgrades.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a big lift, I think.
I think it's going to get bigger every time we try to push the envelope.
Yeah, I think so, right.
Right.
Did you want to add to it?
Yeah, I'll just follow Jonathan Abencine, Assistant Director of Resource Management. I'll just follow on to what Peter was saying. We've actually, in addition to this reconvening and looking for good, looking for triggers to mandate retrofits, we're also, we also have a voluntary program that we've launched to, to facilitate EVSE installation in existing multifamily dwellings through rebates. We've, we're, in fact, in talks with Palo Alto Housing Corp.
Just pause there a minute. Say rebates again.
Rebates.
Right. Meaning, I think that's an important motivator. It wasn't to make you, it wasn't that you mispronounced it.
No, it's okay. I mean, I would, I was just, yeah, I was curious what you were emphasizing about it, whether that was an important piece, or maybe not going far enough. That was the piece I was curious about.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I think what, what we're really saying is, is in order to up the number of EVs that are out there, to reduce that range anxiety and so forth, you really do need more chargers that are, that are easily available.
Yeah.
And I don't know how many we have right now in the city, but it's clear that we could probably use twice as many.
Yes, and that's something we're going to have to investigate, and also dig in a little bit more to see exactly what the barriers are. We're working on a survey right now to our customers that's going to maybe shed a little bit more light on, on exactly what those barriers are.
Which is really good. Okay, I appreciate all that feedback.
If I might add one other dimension of Vice Mayor, that this isn't all on the city, that the private sector is also heavily engaged, no surprise. Tesla, with the rollout of the Model 3s, has been in conversation with us, as well as communities throughout the Bay Area, on rollout of additional superchargers. So they're interested in, whether it be leasing properties from whomever, it would be the appropriate landowner, in order to place additional superchargers in urban areas, so that it's very convenient for a 90-minute visit when someone's having a cup of coffee, or shopping, or what have you. So clearly been very active in that area, and will be more so. We also just became aware of a program that ChargePoint is undertaking that specifically focused on multifamily developments, where they are offering to make direct contact with the landlord themselves, in order to make it easier for a tenant to make the case, and for a landlord to say yes to putting in infrastructure. So clearly, the private sector has a significant role, if not larger than the cities.
Yeah. So, so third-party opportunities are one of the things we're going to investigate, both because of the expertise they bring, it's their money, not our money, and it lets them take the responsibility of assessing the market risk and how fast things to move, which is more their expertise than ours. But to, you know, to summarize on the question that you asked, I think there are three major measures that we have to work with here. One is mandates, where they can be justified, as Peter talked about. Second is incentives, and rebates, as you talked about. And third is education, which we often forget, but has, has a lot of leverage here. This is something that Hillary talked about in relation to the ride and drive events. Just giving people contact with this technology changes their sense of what's possible or appropriate for them. We have focused that on rides in vehicles for individual purchasers, but there may be an analogous kind of education effort for owners of multifamily buildings, so they can see what their opportunities are, what the benefits are for them, what programs we have to help them to build that population of infrastructure.
So why don't we just start our survey tonight? How many people in here have an electric vehicle? Well, that's fewer than I would have guessed, by far. How many of you would have an electric vehicle if it was easier to charge it? Well, that improves it a little. I am actually surprised. I, seeing the number of Priuses and Teslas in town, it would look like there are actually more. Thank you all.
Fertile Fuel for our work.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thanks very much. So I'm going to sort of continue the, a little bit on this discussion. But, so on the implementation plan, what I liked a lot was it's, it's much more focused and specific than the last time around, and it's focused and specific on the highest impact areas, right? So nicely done. Here's what I hope can be in the next phase. Okay. You know, we've got a lot of, I still can't tell from this, you know, sort of, of all these programs and goals and strategic moves and so forth, how many tons of CO2 equivalent it's going to produce? Okay? I think that's important. And some idea how much these things are going to cost, because the whole discussion of cost-effectiveness, well, you know, if, if one program costs that much per ton, and another program costs that much per ton, then we're going to prioritize appropriately. And as we get into an implementation, implementation plans, I think that kind of stuff becomes very relevant, okay? Are we gonna, is this going to get us to 80-30, right? I can't tell from this, okay? So I think, you know, metrics and measurement, right? And how do we track where we are and so forth? You know, that's a key part of implementation, right? And so, again, on the next phase and rev 1.1 of this and so forth, you know, I hope we'll see some more of that. I will say, back to the discussion of EVs, I thought, one example, though, is we want local, we want to drive local ownership of 4,000 to 6,000 EVs by 2020. I thought that was great. It's measurable, it's specific, we can see how close we're getting there. I mean, I think, I think if there was a lot more stuff like that, I mean, if there, you know, in there, I think that would be a big step forward in the next rev of this. And the whole discussion about, you know, EVs and multi-unit, that makes a lot of sense to me, okay? But if you start looking at this, I mean, there's 27,000, 27,000 housing units in Palo Alto, okay? We got 1,000 EVs roughly in Palo Alto. I assume that most of them are like mine, which is you charge it, you charge them at your, your place of residence, right? And that's, if you've got a single-family home, that's one thing. If you're an apartment building, it's something completely different, right? So that means there's 26,000 housing units out there that don't have an EV, right? And so even if we got all the new construction, okay, to be EV-ready, that's still 26,000 housing units that don't have an EV that we're going to have to go get. So I think your focus on retrofitting, I think that's going to be important. That's the kind of stuff that, you know, as we get into metrics, measurements, plans on how to get there, we'll get. Because, for example, you know, another bullet here is, you know, expand EV deployment in the city fleet, okay? Well, we have several dozen passenger vehicles in the city fleet, okay? So how much is it going to cost to buy EVs for the city fleet versus how much are we going to expend going after the 26,000 housing units that don't have an EV? You know, that's the kind of stuff that we want to be able to figure out. And, and so as we get further into the implementation, which, you know, I hope the next rev is earlier than 2020, right? I think, I think, I think that'll be important. So anyway, nice step forward, looking, looking forward to seeing the next one.
Thank you for those comments. Let me respond briefly to a couple of them. On the first matter of, of tons and costs, in the S cap itself, we did extensive modeling and projections of what those impacts of different strategies would be. We pulled out summaries of that in your attachment E, I believe, in tonight's packet, that gives you the high-level perspective on that. That's some of how we prioritize, based on scale of impact and cost-effectiveness. We have not recalibrated that for the specific actions in this plan. We wanted to wait for you to direct us to move forward on this plan, and then some of the work that we do will be that practicality and cost-effectiveness analysis for specific measures.
For me, please so move. Thank you.
Yeah. And to be clear, you know, some of them are going to be hard to say. We can't exactly, we don't control the rate of EV adoption. We can't predict it exactly. We can encourage it and support it where we have leverage, for example, by expanding charging infrastructure. But the market's going to move at its own speed. You know, we're projecting four to 6,000 units by 2020. I heard off the record last week, I hope to have it on the record source soon, that we may see those numbers by the end of next year. So, you know, so we're challenged here, and how do we keep up with the pace of a rapid change in the transportation system of this country?
I understand that, I understand the difficulty, I think. But again, if we're going to, if we're going to commit to achieving 80-30, and if we're going to move forward with implementation, I think we've got to face that challenge.
Absolutely.
We've got to be able to be prescriptive here.
Yeah. And, and the point that you made of looking at what's the most effective way to deploy our resources and our money to get the best result is exactly what we need to look at in this next piece of work, at a very specific, granular level. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I appreciate the amendments that have been made to the, to the motion very much, and appreciate that we're moving forward in a way that is more focused. So thank you for returning with this organized in that fashion. So just a couple of things. One is, given that one of the goals underwater, packet page 231 and page 10 of 10 in the report, given that it does include protect Canopy Creek's groundwater in the bay, thank you very much, why would not, under one of the key actions, would it not include the de-watering ordinance? Because it's, it's in the works, it's made progress, why would we not include that as one of the key actions?
Because, because it's in the works, because there's substantial other effort on it, because it was a moving target that we couldn't nail down in this plan.
But you're not trying to nail down exactly what it would, would do. These are, well, there's been a lot of study that shows what it would do, but I guess I'm not clear still why it couldn't be included as one of the action items here. Because it is, because it is in the works, a lot of, yeah, thank you, Phil.
All I did was get up. Phil Bobel again. You know, with all these things, it's kind of a judgment. The last document we brought to you had many more key actions, it did include that. And we had to make some choices here about the things that were most important to meet this goal. And remember that the de-watering thing, there's still a debate among people as to exactly what the effect is of reducing that water. It's the groundwater, pumping from the groundwater. Will it support the goal of allowing us to use it for some other purpose? In the near term, probably not. Is it a good idea to leave it in the ground? Yes. But, so we had to kind of ask ourselves, what are the really key action items that we can say actually moves to one of these goals? And so it wasn't brought forward to this level, although it is something we're working on, and it was in a longer version of this that we had originally.
So the, thank you for that. And so the, I guess the, the short answer is that because there's still some debate on what the impacts are and aren't, and the benefits are and aren't, that's why it's not on this list?
Well, and also, as Phil said, we're, we're trying to focus this to the, you know, a short, key, salient list of what needs to happen in response to your request last time. This is not all that's being done. There are other efforts underway in the city, but the focus of the SIP seemed, seemed to us that these were the critical elements to move us toward those goals. And I'll just say, this is, you know, this has been one of our challenges throughout, is finding the right balance of enough breadth, right amount of breadth, right amount of depth, right amount of detail, right amount of comprehensivity, right amount of focus.
So if I, if I might jump in, if it's okay, both to respond to Councilmember Holman's comment, and then also Councilmember Phil Seth's earlier comment. So, you know, this SIP is to guide us in 18, 19, and 20. That means, and it also anticipates the fact that we may need to specifically come back to council for further approval for programmatic direction within this implementation period of the three years. And it would be, it would make kind of common sense that when we would do that sort of thing, to the extent possible, we would bring sort of cost-benefit information in this timeframe to the council to say, we think we ought to do this, and go in this particular direction. We may need programmatic approval or resource approval, and here's why, here's what we think it can get us. You know, if you look at the chart that we have here in the, in the presentation, slide number three in your packet, the SIP does, in an overall sense, that this 18 to 20 SIP anticipate a potential reduction of 54% greenhouse gas reduction in this period. Now, a lot of that is due to the fact, if we want to count what we would get in gas credits for essentially buying offsets during that period. But we will, over that timeframe, to the extent that we're able to swap out, real improvements to gas, for example, for gas credits, start to be able to report. I mean, this is not something that we're going to do this in 2018, and we're not going to be collecting new data until 2020 and just doing a final report. So I think that's important. So along the same lines about where we are, you know, there could be an evolution a year, 18 months from now, in our thinking on de-watering and what we know about that. And so we would also be in a position to be monitoring that, and if need be, report to the council. So I would, I would ask that you think about what you're doing here with the SIP, is approving a direction for us over the next three years? And, you know, we may go a little bit this way and that way, but it'd be perfectly appropriate at certain times for us to be reporting to you along the way. It may sometimes be a comprehensive report, sometimes it may just be within a specific program area, and to say, well, you know, we know a lot more about what de-watering will do now, and it happens to be 2019, we're not waiting till the end of 2020.
So you well anticipated my next question, which is that, given this is a three-year program that's outlined here, that you will be coming back to the council, I would hope, at least on an annual basis, to report out and update, so.
Yeah, and I would say, programmatically, let's just say de-watering, because that's going to be back somehow, in a different forum than just reporting on the SIP. It may be very well appropriate that we're able to draw some interconnects between what we were thinking on the SIP, and where we are three months from now, or six months from now, or a year from now on de-watering, more than we can even right now. And as Gil also said, we actually have other measures and reports that are not included in here. This was, they're sort of intentionally excluded at this point for focus, to have clarity about what we want to ensure we really deliver on over this three-year period.
And so, thank you for that. And so my next question is because I just don't want to disappoint Gil. That's one of my main missions here tonight, is I just don't want to disappoint Gil. So the other question that I had-
How, how do we measure that?
Smile on my face, man.
So, so the other question I had was about something that we have, we have things at play, some things already been put at, in place. So the other one that I'm going to ask about, which has to do with the, I'm not going to disappoint Gil, is a- disappoint Gil, is about C and D. Because David Cole mentioned direct conflict. And I appreciate a lot of the work that's included in the energy portion of this, but there is so much, both in the terms of energy and, I'm not going to repeat what you've heard me preach about 15 times, but about energy, creating the demand for energy.
Sure.
And in addition that, to that, the recycling energy that we use because we don't salvage. So we have a C and D ordinance that has a salvage aspect to it, but we don't, we don't utilize it. It is on rare occasion. And I, just a couple of weeks ago, mentioned something, so somebody that I know owned a house on, on Churchill, and the house turned 100 last year because a friend of mine was looking to buy it. I mean, I knew the people anyway, but because a friend of mine was looking to buy it, I was all over the house. There wasn't a crack anywhere. It was not salvaged. It was scraped. And that to me is, it's, it's a, I'll put it up there with sins. It's just the environmental impact and the lack of reuse of materials and salvage is just really, I, I think it's devastating. And I, I hate as a city that we just turn a blind eye to that. So, here you are again, Phil.
Here I am again.
Well, let me, let me just say first, Councilmember Holman, that we see eye to eye on that one. I think it's an important concern. Zero waste and the circular economy was one of the 10 thematic focuses of the earlier version, and we focused down to four. So, you know, the zero waste, municipal operations, community behavior, finance, regeneration, and the natural environment, these are all places where we, the staff still has efforts underway, will continue to, including the C and D concern. It's just not in the focus on these four, you know, primary levers that we've come back to you with tonight. It does not mean that we don't think they're important. It certainly doesn't mean we're not going to pursue them. But we.
I don't want to, I don't want to take much time, but like I said, I didn't want to disappoint you because I always bring it up. But again, because we have an ordinance that talks about salvage, it seems like it's a natural to kind of include it here, Phil.
And let me just assure you that we have heard you and others, and we've started a new effort just several months ago, to look at not only C and D, but what we're now calling construction waste. So there's a certain amount of waste generated by knocking stuff down, and there's another amount generated by the act of constructing. And they're both areas where we can see dramatic improvement. In fact, we just looked at, again, at our sort of waste characterization, where is our biggest contribution to the landfill coming? So at first, it was food waste, and we've been working on that for the last three years. And just in the last several months, we've said, you know, Councilman Holman was right. The next big thing that we've got to look at is both C and D and construction waste. They are different. But combined together, they're right up there with food waste in what is making up the bulk now of the stuff that we send to landfill. So I've personally been visiting the sites recently with our team that takes this stuff. It's either Zanker, or it's the smart station, or it's a landfill directly, and trying to figure out what is a way forward where we can get somebody to get much more recycling done, and how can we augment our current ordinance so that we get what you refer to as salvage done? And I think the way we augment our current ordinance, and the thing that we're seriously considering, and we have an internal work group working on this within the city now, is to require not only that this inventory be done, which is what we currently require for the big sites, but that there be a period of time where it has to be advertised that this exists and let people come through and look at it and see what they can salvage. That adds to the time, but it doesn't have to if people plan ahead that are planning either deconstruction or demolition. So they just have to plan ahead and they have to build this time period in. And we think that's a good way to let others look at it, not just have them do their own inventory. Secondly, we can augment the inventory with the next logical step, which is, okay, you've inventoried it now, so what of that stuff that's on your inventory do you think we can really salvage? And let's take a look at that. We have to have more resources to do that. We're trying to figure out how to do that in the short term with the funds in the refuse fund. But then long-term, that would have to become another fee on developer. But we can at least seed it and start it with our refuse funding. So I just wanted to let you know that in the next 12 months, you're going to see a new ordinance and you're going to see a, a sort of revised ordinance to that chapter five where the C and D stuff exists. And I just wanted to assure you that on a different page from this, we are really heating up our efforts on both C and D, well, construction and demolition and salvage.
I'm very happy to hear the words salvage and recycling used in the same sentence and not just everything lumped under recycling, so I appreciate that very much. So I think that ends my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah. So it looks like we have a lot of people here for the history museum, so I'll try to go quickly. So I did find this much more focused. I really liked the format with the goals and the KPIs, the action items. On the energy plan, I think, I think we had a focus on improving some of our, the energy efficiency of some of our affordable housing. We get kind of a double benefit in that energy costs are a larger percent of income for those folks. I think your goal six achieves that. I mean, there's a lot of simpler language in this report, but maybe not in this one. But is that what's meant by commissioning, recommissioning, to ensure efficient post-occupancy building operations? Would that, would that be things like looking at our existing affordable housing stock, making it more energy efficient?
That's actually in an existing program, and we'll underway among our multifamily development.
Jonathan Abencien. So the, it's one of the other goals, and I'd have to take a look back at the, back at the goals, but it's one of the goals that references efficiency, and that definitely includes a focus on low-income customers. We actually have some, not only state mandates, but also programs that we want to focus on around low-income customers, and that includes both multifamily and single-family dwelling units. It's called our residential energy assistance program, and it allows low-income customers to get a variety of free upgrades.
But I guess, you know, programs for the owners of the buildings to do larger overhauls?
Yeah, the programs are for those, I'd have to look at exactly how that's implemented, but the programs are for, are for low-income customers, and many of those are renters, so.
We've been working specifically with Al Alto Housing Corp.
Cool. Okay. On mobility, again, maybe it's just shorthand, we have fund the TMA. I hope that's not interpreted as just funding from the general plan, but, or general fund, but really just looking for sources of funding for the TMA.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't make a distinction here about where the sources are. It could be general fund, it could be parking revenues, could be various other sources. I think that's something for us to do some more work on, propose to you, and you, and you to decide.
Yeah, I just think the general, general fund's not sustainable.
Right.
The other one, the other question I had about this was really the way we state the goal about making it, make it more convenient not to drive. And, you know, I think, I think this idea about kind of mobility, about making it harder to get around, you know, is not a great message. And I think maybe there's a way we could more positively word this goal to be something like, ensure that our transit services are highly utilized, rather than make it more convenient not to drive. I'm looking at, on packet page 229.
So Councilmember, with respect, it doesn't say make it more difficult to drive, which as you know, is a strategy that some environmentalists have proposed as a way to reduce vehicle use and congestion. We're not taking that approach. We're saying, let's do it with a carrot, not a stick. Let's make it more convenient not to drive. Let's provide people with alternatives that are more attractive and more convenient.
But we already have the goal of reducing single occupancy drivers.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we do have people driving with four or five people in a vehicle, that seems fine. It really seems the second goal is about making sure our mass transit's fully utilized. And I just think it's a more positive way to word it.
I mean, it's not just mass transit, it's mobile, new mobility services, it's walkability, bikeability, it's lots of different ways not to drive. This came out of really the first organizing meeting of the TMA. We had 50 people talking over the course of a couple of hours about what they wanted, and it struck me, and I said at the end of the meeting, that I think you're all saying the same thing, and the dozens of different things you're saying, you're wanting it to be more convenient, because, you know, no matter how much you want to be a non-SOV driver, or you want to be environmentally responsible, if it's not convenient, you're not going to do it. And so, you know, the convenience for individuals, whether they are workers with multiple jobs, or families with kids in daycare, or soccer coaches, or what have you, if we can't provide systems that make it more convenient for people not to have to drive themselves, we don't get there. That, that's the reason behind that.
I hear what you're saying.
So, so there are specific elements that need to be there. I completely agree with you, but we thought that would be a useful overarching frame to guide all the specifics.
Okay. So I hear what you're saying about making it convenient. I still think getting rid of the negative in the goal would come across a little, just the way you, when you read it. We had a lot of discussion about electric vehicles. The thing that really jumped out at me was there is no KPI for charging stations, and it just seemed like we're talking about it quite a bit. I think, I think in a way, you know, I look at other cities around the bay, I feel like we are falling behind a little bit on our charging stations. And it doesn't have to be at home, as people have pointed out, people can charge at work or public stations. But I wanted to suggest, I just wondered if that'd been discussed as a KPI, and I was going to suggest maybe adding it. So just getting people to buy cars without having the infrastructure to charge, obviously it doesn't work.
Yeah. And on the other hand, they're not going to buy cars if they don't think the infrastructure is there. So I think, we didn't, we didn't discuss this in detail, your suggestion, but my thought would be that charging stations are kind of enabling KPI that gets you to the real goal of higher EV penetration. And we don't want to have too many of them.
Yeah, I'd love to see the metric of how many charging stations we have.
It's certainly something we have our eyes on and will track.
We've got public. We have information on the public charger, we've got so much on the private.
Yeah. So is staff opposed to adding that as a KPI? Is it?
You know, I think ultimately, the public chargers will be, will hopefully be a small fraction of the total chargers, and that the majority will be on private property. And again, until we have a separate rate structure for EV charging, it may be difficult for us to collect that information. So I, you know, just throw that out as a somewhat limitation on our ability to track that effectively.
Yeah. Peter.
Peter Pernatia, Development Services Director. For, to the extent that electric vehicle chargers obtain a permit for installation, we can track those. What we can't track is if somebody is plugging their electric vehicle into an outlet and using that as a charger.
Right. That's a very slow trickle charge.
Level one.
Yeah, you can plug it into a 210 outlet, which is like a level two, but to your point, we can track the permits, and we can do a delta between today and three years from now.
Okay. I guess I just looked at my colleagues if they're interested in adding that KPI or, all right. I've been pretty involved on the water one, so I actually didn't have any comments or questions on that one. I did have a question about A in here. So this, I just want to make sure I understand this, because of the way it was worded, this is the implementation plan, right? This replaces the document we saw in June. Okay. Because it was worded as a summary, and I just wanted to make sure that what we were passing is this as the implementation plan.
This is the implement, this is the implementation plan. I refer to summary just because beneath this, there's a lot of detail of staff work plans of the different measures being taken, you know, to implement the things that you see here. So this is a, this summarizes all of those.
Right. Okay. Great. But we're not, by this coach, we're not passing that document we saw in June.
Right. This one.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Just wanted to thank staff for, for your work on this. Looks, looks much better, so great job.
Thank you.
I wanted to also agree with Councilmember Phil says, point about metrics and trying to figure out what return on investment is and trying to maximize return on investment, given the scarce dollars and resources that we have. But I don't think that needs any amendments. But I do have two quick ones. So first one is, so I see on page, packet page 228, EGY1.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember, can you speak directly to the mic? I can't quite hear you.
Packet page 228, EGY1.
Give me a second.
Continue to purchase carbon offsets to match natural gas emissions. Page seven of 10. So last week, I think council approved a measure to purchase carbon offsets in Mexico. And, you know, I, I think, you know, there's, there were terrible forest fires in Sonoma, Napa, you know, thousands of acres burned. We have raging forest fires down in Southern California, where, you know, millions of trees can be burned up. And I think, you know, I, I think the idea of carbon offices are really good, that rather than shipping dollars to Mexico, I think what we should do is we should do the carbon offsets locally. We should help invest them in, let's say, Sonoma, right on Napa, where our neighboring cities have lost everything due to these terrible forest fires versus shipping them over to a foreign country. What's your thoughts about that?
Well, it's not just my thoughts, Councilmember, it's your thoughts as well. You, you authorized that specific offset purchase recently, but last year, council authorized the approach of offsetting our carbon, our natural gas emissions and.
Oh, no, no, I'm not opposing our carbon offsets. My, my point is, if we're going to purchase carbon offsets, let's purchase them locally. Let's help fellow Americans, fellow Californians, right, versus, you know, foreign countries.
And that, in fact, is, is the policy the council adopted last year, was to prioritize local offsets where they are possible, where they're practical, affordable, and, you know, and meet the quality standards of carbon offsets. So staff is looking for opportunities to do that, and the one you suggest of local reforestation could be something to take a look at.
Should, should make a note, though, that we do follow the California Resources Board protocol and certification of the offsets. And to my knowledge, or actually, I haven't really been tracking this, but like in staff discussions, we're not aware at this point of certified projects being established related to the fires. Certainly at some point, they're very well maybe, but I suspect it's just premature.
So you're saying that we only purchase carbon offsets in foreign countries, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that we only purchase certified carbon offsets that meet the CARB certification protocol.
Just wanted to clarify that just a little bit. So we actually don't purchase CARB certified offsets because we are not buying them for compliance. This is our own voluntary program. So we do purchase offsets from projects that are, that fall under those approved project types by CARB, forestry being one of them. So, you know, I would just, this is a little aside from the SIP, I think, because the carbon neutral program is something that's approved by council, and the contract approved by council last week was just one method of implementing that program.
Well, I remember that proposal, it actually needed a waiver because it wasn't compliant. So not only was it in a foreign country, but it needed a waiver because it wasn't compliant in terms, in terms of true carbon offset. It wasn't verified, I think, or I forgot the exact term.
No, it wasn't, it didn't need a waiver, it was outs. When we brought the carbon neutral program to council, it was just for US projects. And because this was a project, not a US project, we came to council specifically to get council's approval of that project, rather than just buying offsets under the umbrella of the approved enabling agreements in carbon neutral plan that was previously approved by council. But my point being that the, the Wauhakan project is a forestry project with a protocol very similar to that approved by CARB, and it's about 10% of what we need to buy in the course of a year. So it's a relatively small amount.
No, I, I hear you. But, you know, when I see my fellow neighbors in California lose their homes, you know, millions of acres of forest being burned, it makes me wonder, why are we reforesting in Mexico or a foreign country versus reforesting California? So that's just, to me, it should be a priority to do locally first.
Well, with, Councilmember, within EGY1, the second sentence is to evaluate. Well, with, Councilmember, within EGY1, the second sentence is to evaluate potential local offset purchases. So that's been the intention last year in the council resolution. It's the intention here. As Ed has pointed out, you know, reforestation in response to the recent fires is just premature, and no one's doing it yet. They're still digging out. But that's, you know, if those opportunities arise, it's certainly something we would look at.
Well, that's kind of amendment I like to make, which is, say, rather than, say, evaluate potential, I think we should evaluate and prioritize local offset purchases.
Where are you?
Page, back to page 228.
So, just to point out real quick, the offsets were for Oaxaca, a sister city. It's not just a foreign country, it's a sister city of Palo Alto. And also, as staff pointed out, the evaluation of potential local offset purchases is highlighted right there. So I don't think that the, I don't think the amendment is necessary.
If I could add one thing there, with regard to prioritization, I believe the language in council's policy adoption of carbon, of natural gas offsets last year specifically said prioritize local offsets. So I think the point you're making is a good one. I think it's already established as city policy, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. It didn't seem to happen last week, though. It didn't seem to happen last week. That's my point.
So, I'm not going to accept the amendment as friendly, because it's already our policy, and we can't just buy offsets if there isn't a program to buy the offset yet. But maybe it's something we can do next year or the year after with reforestation, because of these horrible California fires. They're just, they're not on the market yet. So we just couldn't do it this week. If I'm understanding staff correctly, it's not that they weren't interested, they just couldn't. There's no program to buy Sonoma reforestation offsets that you're aware of yet.
Yeah.
But our existing policy would actually prioritize that.
I understand that. But these are voluntary, we're not doing it for some sort of compliance reason. We're doing it because we're trying to be good citizens. So, if we're trying to be good citizens, you know, paying for more tree planting in Napa and Sonoma seems to be kind of a wiser choice than doing it in Mexico. But I get your point.
Yeah, we could do it next year.
Okay. So my second one has to do with packet page 229 on MLB4. And it's actually something that Councilmember Walbach was talking about earlier, which is, you know, I think bikes are a large part of the solution, but not the only part. Electric skateboards, electric scooters, electric bikes, electric unicycles, there's a long list. There's a long list of last mile solutions. And so, I think MLB4 should be enhanced to be more than just bike boulevards. It should be, I think, I think the term that people use is, is, well, there's a lot of them that could be used, but I think it has to be, it should expand beyond just bikes. So I'd like to make a friendly amendment that, that we maybe change it from bike boulevards to personal transportation vehicles, or something to that effect, where it incorporates the bigger idea of that, you know, bikes are part of the solution, but not the only solution.
So I'm not going to accept this one, because it already does say redesign streets to support active and non-SOV modes of travel. And so, those other modes, such as my motorcycle or your electric scooter, or bicycle, or electric bike, you know, those would all, those would all be covered there, I think.
Not a single occupancy vehicle motorcycle.
That's a good question. Since we have a lot less parking impact and traffic impact, I hope we're categorized a little bit lower, because it's much less parking impact. But I think it's already pretty well covered by it, so I want to accept it as friendly.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Coop.
So most of the questions I had are already answered, but I did want to ask, so we have, we're asking for more robust EV charging stations here in Palo Alto. How are the regional efforts going? I mean, obviously, we go out of town and we need the charging stations over there. So is there a coordination with all the other cities? How robust are they?
As far as the level of other cities' efforts, I can't speak to that. Perhaps somebody else can. With regard to coordination, the city manager has convened, well, I guess about eight months ago now, a managers' mobility partnership. It's a regular monthly meeting of the city managers of Redwood City, Menlo Park, Palo Alto, and Mountain View, as well as folks from Stanford, to look specifically at how we can coordinate and collaborate around transportation strategies, you know, recognizing that none of us by ourselves can solve the problem, and the strategies that we choose affect each other. So we're looking at ways to collaborate. There's been an initial focus on the bicycle networks and bike sharing, and we'll be moving on to other issues as well. So I think that's the place where we're looking at how to do that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, if we're pushing towards electric vehicles, that, you know, there is means for charging in other cities. I went to San Francisco, and it was very difficult to find one. So, until we have that kind of figured out also. So I hope that conversation continues. So, thank you. I mean, it's a lot more easier to figure out this time around. Also, I'm looking forward towards a stronger groundwater ordinance coming in the new year, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If we could vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Gil.
Thank you.
All right. No. And now we're on to the History Museum item. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. Congratulations, you guys. Hello, Lalo. I'll let you do the lead. All right. Temper him if need be.
Yeah.
Should I start?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's looking a little different there.
Even if I don't do anything, it's coming off anyways.
Let's go.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, council members. Hamid Ghamagami, Real Property Manager. Staff is recommending the council approve a one-year extension of the option to lease for the Palo Alto Historical Museum for the Roth Building. For the past 10 years, Palo Alto Historical Museum has been working to create a historical museum at the Roth Building by focusing on developing comprehensive rehabilitation plan and seismic plan, and embarking on a marketing plan to reach out to community and potential donors to raise the needed funds. It has been a challenging process, but they've been making some progress. The additional time that, basically, they're requesting will allow the museum to continue its fundraising efforts to reach $9.2 million to complete the seismic and rehab, and to jumpstart this project. Basically, this concludes my report. The Palo Alto Museum folks are here to make a presentation, a brief presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public speakers? All right. Do you have a public, you have a presentation you wanted to give?
Yes, I have a short presentation.
Let's go ahead and do the presentation.
Excellent, thank you.
And it's Rich Green, right?
Yes. Mayor Scharf and city council members, thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Rich Green. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Palo Alto History Museum. And with me tonight is Laura Bajook, our director. We are both longtime residents of Palo Alto. Laura, right here. Also in the audience is Tim Stitt. Here's Tim, right there. Tim Stitt of Vance Brown Construction, the firm that knows Burge-Clark buildings best, and has a proven track record of coming in on time and on budget. Ambrose Wong is also here from Garavalia Architects. They are, they have been the architect of record since the beginning of the project. Ambrose?
Yes.
Right back here. Thank you. Also with us, we have a few of the 600-plus supporters of the museum project, including several of our board members and advisory board members. Would you all please stand and be recognized? Everyone supporting the Palo Alto History Museum, please stand. And I thank you for staying into this late hour. These are passionate, dedicated people helping this worthy project forward. We're here tonight to update you on our campaign to create Palo Alto's first history museum for the people of Palo Alto, and to request a one-year extension on our lease option. Why a history museum? Why is this important? Why is it so important to the people in this room? There are many reasons. When I moved here in 1991, I was shocked that there was no history museum that I could go to to get myself grounded. And what I learned was an extraordinary community, one of a kind in the world. Museums build community. It's a place for people to gather, to get grounded in where they are, and how important their contribution to the community can be. We're here to preserve an historic treasure, the Roth Building at 300 Homer Avenue on the corner of Homer and Bryant. We are the stewards of the collections, and we have growing collections. They're in storage facilities around the area. The museum is a civic hub. It's a place for people to come together, to have conversations inspired by the history that surrounds them. They have conversation, to explore explanation, illumination. It's an education, it's a center for education. The third and fourth graders will use this facility regularly, and it's a place for people to come to do research. It's a place to honor the contributions of the great Palo Altons, and this goes right back to Wannabriones and the Stanfords and forward. It's a place to capture oral histories, video histories. Our oral histories department will be extremely busy. And it's a place to permanently store and protect our city archives, which are currently residing at Coverley. So, we are here to build a museum that will inspire the future for continued This all started with a public-private partnership. It started in the year 2000. For some of you who may not know the whole history here, the Palo Alto Medical Foundation moved out, and much of that area was torn down. Some people saw the value of what we call the Roth Building, named after Dr. Roth, one of the founding doctors of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. And as part of the successful SOFA, which is the South of Forest Area Coordinated Area Plan Agreement in 2000, the city saved the historic Roth Building for public use, developed a two-acre Heritage Park site, and added high-density housing. An RFP process generated one proposal. That proposal came from Paha, the Palo Alto Historical Association. Paha then spun off a different Board of Directors, a new Board of Directors, called the Palo Alto History Museum. And that was to raise money to open the museum. Two years later, the Palo Alto History Museum formed as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to raise funds and develop, to develop and operate the history museum. Fundraising began in 2005, when council approved the original 30-year lease option agreement, where we would rent the museum from the city. This is, this is a city-owned building for $1 a year. It took four years, but we received national historic register status for the Roth Building. This opened up funding doors for us, making it eligible for the TDR program, for example, the Transfer of Development Rights, and county and national grants. Fast forward to today, rehabilitation plans are nearly complete and meet city requirements. We were at the ARB just last Thursday. We are on the verge of applying for the final building permits. We're ready. We want the museum open in time for the city's 125th anniversary. I love this word, the Quesqui Centennial. Okay? The Quesqui Centennial. The Palo Alto History Museum will be the hub, the focus of that celebration year in the year 2019. That's ambitious. Okay? We've got a lot of work to do to get doors open on that museum by the year 2019, and we will do it. We have a great team. Most of the board members are here tonight. You see their names and pictures there. We also have, these board members include a variety of community members, from third-generation Palo Altons to relative newcomers, retired and current professionals from many walks of life. Our professional staff have nearly four decades of museum experience between them. We have a project manager who's here tonight, Kitsey Tanner. There you are, Kitsey. Kitsey, when I asked Kitsey if she would help us as a project manager on the construction side, she goes, "Hell, yeah. My father was the first orthopedic surgeon in that building. I grew up in that building, and I'm there with you 100 percent." Thank you, Kitsey. We have an advisory board. There are some stellar names on that list, if you look at it. This is sort of the who's who of Palo Alto. Some of these names go back quite a few years. These people are dedicated to our purpose. They help us every day. It's a strong advisory board. They further our connection to the many corners of this large and diverse community. Their advice, connections, and support are critical, and we thank all of our volunteers for their service. A community treasure. So the Roth Building, 1932, is derelict right now. It is boarded up, it is an eyesore. We need to change that soon. It is stabilized. Thank you very much to the city for stabilizing it. It's not flooding anymore in the basement. We've invested close to $700,000 in the architectural plans over many years. Those plans are now fully compliant with city requirements and are complete. With a few minor adjustments, we're ready for permits. We are shovel-ready, as we like to say. If you look at that picture, the back of the building is what you see from Heritage Park. There's going to be a little café area for tables and so on on the back, so that the moms and dads who are playing with their kids in that playlot have a place to go get a cup of coffee. The community rooms are right behind there. Those are public access community rooms that would encourage the history museum to be that civic hub. Up on the second floor, over the community rooms, is the permanent home of the city archives. This is going to be a media and archive research center headed by a city historian, sitting behind me, Steve Steiger. And notice there's a little door over to the right, looks like somebody's walking in. That is a bathroom. That is going to be the first bathroom available to the kids, the moms and the dads, playing in that playlot. Right now, they have no bathroom. We are paying for that bathroom, and we will maintain it appropriately. It's a very important part of our project. This is a world-class design. What will the museum look like? And this is like the worst place for the presentation to choke. I'm sorry. There's a movie there. Imagine, if you will, a view of the interior of the building. Let's go back one slide. Right, this one. There's a movie there. Nope. Okay. Well, I'm sorry about that. We get it, we had a very generous gift from the Peery Foundation last year that helped us start to develop the exhibit and gallery concepts. We put out an RFP. We selected Donald Sibbet, the Sibbet Group, and Brightline up in San Francisco, and they have generated some gorgeous renderings of what is going to happen inside this history museum. What do those galleries look like? Who, who will they serve? We did... We debuted those renderings last fall at the MacArthur Park event, where we basically sold the place out for the history museum event. It was a donor appreciation event. Donors were very enthusiastic by what they saw, and new gifts were received. There will be a video wall. There's the museum, it will be modern. It will be new. It will be dynamic. It's always changing, always growing. We're going to be using a lot of new technology, including augmented reality, virtual reality, and so on, which both were invented here in Palo Alto. The Learning Center will be mostly for the third and fourth graders. It's also a place for research. The Learning Center is extremely important to us, because one of the fundamental purposes of a history museum is education for the community. With help from Professor Michael Shanks, Stanford professor, founding faculty of the Hassel Plattner Institute of Design at Stanford University, aka the D-School, we are applying design thinking to this museum. Design thinking was invented here in Palo Alto, thanks to David Kelly, IDEO, Professor Shanks, the D-School. We're applying the resources of the D-School to what the future of a museum could be. Palo Alto will take a leadership role in redefining what a history museum can be for a community. I attended Professor Shanks' workshop at Stanford University last week on this topic. It was fascinating. Much more to come. How much will it cost? This is probably the most important slide in the presentation. We have a $20 million campaign.
How much longer do you have?
About three minutes. It's a $20 million campaign. Costs have gone up, as you can imagine. The costs of rehabilitating the city-owned Roth Building, originally estimated at $5.5 million, is now up to $9.2 million. I checked with Tim Stitt last week. The contract with Vance Brown Construction is current, and that is a real number. It is a not-to-exceed number, $9.2 million. We have raised $5.7 million toward that goal. We have a gap of $3.5 million. We need to close that gap aggressively and quickly. We've also raised over $2 million toward the actual build-out of the museum, which is exhibits, galleries, and programs. To date, we've raised over $9 million. We did this with community support from over 600 donors, and we thank them for that. How do we bridge the gap? Well, we do it with intelligence, experience, passion, and commitment. We are, we have an aggressive development campaign that is addressing one-on-one meetings with people of financial capacity. We're also reaching out to the community. We have started our Museum Friends Program, which is an annual contribution from $100 to $10,000. That is going extremely well, headed by our board member Doug Kreitz. We've identified new strategies for businesses founded and based in Palo Alto, inviting them to collaborate with the museum to tell their fascinating origin stories. That project is being spearheaded by Kevin Curry, also here tonight. We are pursuing capital grants, including a $305,000 capital grant from the County Historical Heritage Commission to repair the city tile roof, the clay tile roof. This is, we are getting support from Supervisor Semidion on this. This is an extremely large request and requires extraordinary support. Thank you to Joe Semidion and his staff. Our programs have been standing room only. We did an amazing program on the wave, 50-year anniversary at Coverley. We packed the auditorium there. We also packed the conference room at the Palo Alto Medical Foundation with Ben Mazur, CEO of PAF, and his father Dick Mazur, who passed away this year sadly. So we've given ourselves a hard deadline. The Quasqui Centennial, the year 2019, Palo Alto celebrates 125 years. We will do this in partnership with the Palo Alto Historical Association and many other associations within the city. We would love for this building to be the focal point of that celebration. So so many things have happened here in Palo Alto. This history museum needs to happen to celebrate, from Jane and Leland Stanford, to Jerry Garcia, to Jeremy Lin, to Mark Zuckerberg, Steve Jobs. The list goes on. We have so much to be proud of here. Palo Alto, from its inception, has impacted the world. So let's go ahead and inspire the future. We hope this update on the museum's progress will be useful as you lead our community to the future. Some of you, probably all of you, recognize this extraordinary woman right here. There she is, sitting in red. This is Beth Bunnenberg, standing in the doorway of the Roth Building. Please join Beth Bunnenberg and the museum Board of Directors to rehabilitate this fabulous historic building and transform it into Palo Alto's first history museum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we have a number of public speakers. So Laura, you asked to go last. I'm happy to honor that, if you want to go.
Whenever you like.
It doesn't matter to me. Would you?
No tap dancing included, just FYI.
You want to speak first, or would you like to go to the end?
I'm happy to go now, since I'm already halfway here.
Go on.
Thank you. My name is Laura Bajook. I'm an 18-year resident of Palo Alto, former director in Los Altos and Los Gatos beforehand with the history museum. I have two letters of support I wanted to be sure to read into the record. One from Annette Fazino. Her husband Gary was mayor here some years ago. Dear Mayor Scharf and honorable members of the city council, I am writing today to let you know how important the Palo Alto History Museum is to me and my family. My late husband Gary was passionate about preserving and sharing the history of our unique community. It was his dream that the museum would become a reality and a place to celebrate all that is great about Palo Alto. Because it was Gary's dream, it is now my dream and that of our children. Our community is truly special. Palo Alto is the birthplace of Silicon Valley, and it's a star on the world stage. So many have come to our community to learn, to work, and to live. Do these new folks know about our past and the many people who have lived here, who laid the foundations to make our present day a reality? Our history is rich and needs to be shared with the community, visitors, and future generations. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "We are not makers of history; we are made by history." We modern Palo Altons are beneficiaries of all of those who came before. I urge you to support the Palo Alto History Museum. Let's show our community its beginnings and how we came to today, and the possibilities of continued greatness. Thank you for your consideration and your efforts to share our history with everyone. Annette Fazino. From Senator Joe, excuse me, Old Habits Die Hard, Supervisor Joe Semidion, I've known him for a while, to Palo Alto City Council members, I'm writing to express my support for the new Palo Alto History Museum. Palo Alto has a rich history and culture to be chronicled and shared in the first official history museum. It's important for each new generation of Palo Altons to learn about the place they live and why it is the way it is. But without a physical history museum, it's hard to imagine that happening. The history museum can deepen our sense of place and help us chart our future. The history museum promises to provide the community with interactive learning opportunities and enrichment for all ages. It promises to be a place where we can celebrate local accomplishments and inventions and seek inspiration to create the next ones. I urge the city of Palo Alto to grant the museum every consideration and to do what you can to ensure the museum's success. Sincerely, S. Joseph Semidion, County Supervisor, District 5. Thank you. They can say it better than I can.
Kimberly Wong, to be followed by Marilyn Burdell.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Wong. My grandfather Sam Ying Ma came to Palo Alto in 1905, cooked it in the Stanford dorms, and co-owned the City Cafe on University Avenue back in the early days of Palo Alto. I love sharing my stories of my grandfathers and my moms' humble beginnings here, and am proud of my deep roots. And in doing so, I have met many others who are interested in hearing them and who also have amazing stories to tell. When I travel to different places, I also enjoy visiting local museums to learn about the inhabitants, where I really sense the heart and the soul of the town. The Palo Alto History Museum should be an integral part of the Palo Alto and should be granted the one-year lease option extension on the Roth Building. This will give them time to fundraise for their project, and the Roth Building is the most fitting place to house this museum, as it is a significant part of Palo Alto's history. Please extend their lease so that we can have this building to proudly showcase the rich history that has shaped the city of Palo Alto into the center of innovation and culture that it is today. Thank you.
Marilyn Burdell, to be followed by John Irving.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. I'm Marilyn Burdell. I live on South Court, and I've been a resident of the city for 48 years. I have a special interest in this agenda item because I'm an advisory board member of the Palo Alto History Museum, and I have a background, a fairly extensive volunteer work in Palo Alto in historic preservation, including six years on the Palo Alto Stanford Heritage Board. But I'm just speaking for myself and not in my official capacity of any sort for the advisory board. Huge amounts of work have been accomplished by many volunteers for the history museum over the past decade. The fundraising efforts have been extensive, but as you know, there's still a ways to go to finance the renovation of the Roth Building. Many other accomplishments in the background, which Rich talked about quite a bit, have been made by dedicated volunteers and staff to create the infrastructure for a top-quality and, as Rich said, world-class history museum. Hours and hours of planning have taken place for the museum's design of exhibition space and the content of initial and subsequent exhibitions. Although the fundraising for renovation is not complete, it is quite in keeping with the history of other fine cultural and educational institutions like the Art Center and the Junior Museum, which took quite a number of years and which we're experiencing is the same issue, to reach the financing goal for a renovation of the magnitude of the history museum. I urge you without reservation to extend the lease option for the next year on the road to ensuring the success of the Palo Alto History Museum. And I also wanted to mention that, and it was mentioned in one of the slides, about the fact that we have qualified for TDR money, that I believe there is some leftover money in a kind of a bank of TDR money that wasn't used for another wonderful historic building renovation recently, which was the College Terrace Library. And I would urge you that the city should find a way to contribute that to this project, because the project definitely has, people have done a lot of work to qualify for the TDRs. Thank you.
Thank you. John Irving, to be followed by Jean Libby.
Hello, thank you. While I'm somewhat conflicted, given that as a young person, probably five years old, I was a patient at the clinic with my pediatrician, Dr. Esther Clark, gave me penicillin shots there for various maladies. I have a good news, bad news feeling about the clinic. On a serious note, I think this is an important opportunity for the community to acknowledge that this is an institution that needs to be preserved, that the history that the clinic has in this community and the opportunity for it to endure is very important. And I hope that the council will extend the arrangement for the extending, the arrangement. It's very important that you do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Libby, to be followed by Larry Klein.
Hello, my name is Jean Libby, and I'm a public historian. I've lived in Palo Alto for 53 years. I'm here to honor Ralph Libby, who was a reference librarian for the city of Palo Alto for 35 years. And when he passed away five years ago, Steve Steiger was speaking at his memorial and had the idea that we might have a gallery at the proposed Palo Alto History Museum to honor the mentorship and public service, community service of Ralph Libby. And so I am here in honor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Klein, to be followed by Rita Verrel.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Klein, 50-year resident of Palo Alto. I'm here to speak in a very different way, both supportive and critically, of the effort to create a Palo Alto History Museum. When I chaired the Palo Alto Centennial back in 1994, I certainly became aware of lots of interesting historical stories about our community that ought to be preserved, and a lot more has occurred in the ensuing 23 years. Much of what you've heard, almost all of what you've heard tonight, is why we should have a history museum. And I totally agree with that. The question isn't that. The question is, where's the money going to come from? We've been hearing that the money was right around the corner for a long time. I first heard it about a year after I came back on the council in 2006. We were soon thereafter asked for an extension, for money to fix the basement. And since that time, the council, the city manager, depending on who had the authority, have been asked for a number of different extensions, primarily to raise the money. The money has not been raised. It's very clear it has not been raised. The numbers that Rich Green tossed around are a little different than those in the city staff report, and I have no idea which are right. My remarks depended on what the city staff has. According to that, the history museum people have raised $5.7 million. But $3.9 million of that 5.7 is the money from the city, a million-dollar contribution plus the sale of transferred development rights. So that means they've raised $1,008,000, over 10 years, $180,000 a year. At that rate, it'll take about 75 years to, more, to raise the necessary money. I think we have to be candid and say, the history museum has not been successful in raising the money, and change is necessary. It's not going to happen in one year. I think that that's just unrealistic, and you'll be back here at the same time, same place, discussing another extension. I think that the council should give them a greater period of time, a really realistic period of time, to raise not just the remaining portion for the rehabilitation, but the money necessary for the museum itself. I think that we have to recognize also that people have different skills. And this is not personal at all. Some people are good at one thing, other people are good at fundraising. My experience is that there are very few people who are good at fundraising, and that we need to find them and get them on the historic museum's board if this is going to occur. So I've taken the liberty of drafting a proposal for you. The numbers are probably a little off now that, excuse me. And I hope you'll consider the idea of giving them a three-year extension, subject to various benchmarks that I've outlined there, so that we don't have a repeat of this. It's very good to hear that we really need a history museum, and the city has really stepped up so far, contributing almost a little over $4 million now. The issue is whether there are other contributors, donors in the community, who are also willing to step up. If there are, great. I think they'd be making a great contribution to our city. If there aren't, I think then the city needs to reclaim the property. It's a valuable piece of property, and we just can't have it sitting there forever. It's been 17 years now. It's time for us to make some decisions over the next three years or so. Thank you.
Rita Verrel.
Well, that's hard to follow, but I'm going to give some money. I have my envelope now, and I'm going to give some money, and I really do encourage other people to give money. I think at least the one-year extension makes sense. The idea of a three-year extension is very exciting. I was here last week, and I think the Junior Museum took 15 years. So not to compare history with peacocks, but it does take time to raise money. And I think that everybody knows now that the time is not unlimited, so maybe other people like myself, who have been kind of sitting by the sidelines and not becoming involved, will take this opportunity to become involved. But I urge you very strongly to give the history museum the opportunity to make it happen. Palo Alto has an incredibly rich history. I mean, we are the I mean, we are the center of Silicon Valley, if not of the universe. So I think that we do need a History Museum, and I'm actually very excited about the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Terry Haltzheimer, our last speaker.
Dear council members, I'd like to encourage the council specifically to renew the one-year lease option on the historic Roth Building, which is meant to preserve the city's very important events that have happened here. It's an extremely valuable asset, worth preserving and protecting. If it takes five years, 10 years, it's still worth preserving. The Palo Alto Medical History Museum plans to redevelop this site into really a museum for the community. It's not just strictly old history. It's a history that will live for 10, 20, even 100 years. I'm a school teacher, and I look forward to having my children and the children of Palo Alto come to that History Museum and not only learn about the past, but learn how they can learn from the past to make a better future. And I encourage you, no matter how long it takes, to build this museum. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we come back to council. Vice Mayor Niz.
I appreciate, Rich, you did a good job tonight, Rich Green, Alora as well, and you've got a wonderful supporting cast here tonight, which is very exciting. So congratulations to all of you for your service, for your commitment, and the excitement around this. So I am going to make a motion that would approve the extension of the option to lease the Roth Building between the city of Palo Alto and the Palo Alto History Museum for approximately a year, November 30th of 2018.
Second.
Also, thanks, Lydia. Also, direct the staff simultaneously to develop options for, request for proposal for leasing the building to another organization, returning to council. But, the but in here is that at least 50% of the funds needed for Phase One, and we probably need a discussion about that, but I have put in, as indicated in the budget table, Phase One on packet page 249. So that's what I'm going by, which would be 1.75 million. But I'm not, I'll ask you in a minute about it. I'm not sure that that's exactly the amount, but that's what's in the report for tonight. And what I would say references back to some of what Larry Klein said. This has been a 20-year project. It was a long time ago when the city bought this project and began to plan for the development. And I think, in fact, I looked at this tonight, this was purchased in April of 2000. So the plan has been in the works for a very long time. A number of things apparently have gotten in the way. I don't know what they all are, but there's no question that at this time, we need to go ahead with an alternate plan as well as the current plan. So this amount that I just mentioned must be raised by November of 2018, or the staff should return to council to discuss releasing an RFP. At this point, right now, the mayor is going to create a fundraising auxiliary committee of three city council members. They'll meet with the board of directors of the museum on a regular basis. And I think I heard a second. Did I?
Did you second a council member, Coop?
I did.
Okay.
So let me say a little more about this because the concern that we have, so let me do one of those questions I like to ask. How many of you have been inside the building recently? So would you agree that it's not in great shape?
It's a little dusty.
It really needs to be shored up at this point. But we need two things. We need that commitment, that attention will be paid to the building to shore it up and so forth. And also, what we need to know is that the board is willing to go to the mat on this 1.75, at least as I see it in the packet. To do that is going to take extraordinary concentration or some kind of godparent who will fly in with 1.75. It has been difficult to raise money for the museum, and none of us really know why. It may be because it's difficult to see what this wonderful place would look like when it's finished, but we're puzzled by it. So for me, the best way is to put out the carrot and the stick, and the carrot is, if you make that goal, we continue to work along with you. But the other side of that is to develop an RFP so that some other organization who also wants to be involved with either history or whatever it might be, would have an opportunity to come in and to develop the museum, as we'd all like to see it. So those would be my comments at this point. I appreciate you all being here. Kimberly Wong, I especially enjoyed what you had to say about your parents, who came here at the turn of the century, of the last century. And all of you here, I know, are absolutely committed to this. I think it's going to take that kind of commitment for this to become a reality. Thanks.
Let me let.
Yeah, we just want to clarify.
Do you want to clarify the money?
The money piece of it.
Correct. Lala Press, Chief Financial Officer. Thank you, Vice Mayor Niz. Our understanding is for Phase One that the shortfall is $3.5 million. And I think what I heard you state is that your motion would be 50% of that, $3.5 million.
Correct. I think we should clarify the motion and put the $1,750 in there. So it's, there's no confusion.
I think that's a good idea.
So if we could do that, indicating that that's exactly the amount for Phase, that that's the 50% of the funds needed for Phase One, according to the report that we have for tonight. Would you both agree to that?
Those numbers are correct.
Are you saying yes?
Are you done? If you have other questions or stuff you want to ask them? Okay. Councilmember Coop? Speak to your second.
I think Vice Mayor Liz Niz has stated it very wisely. I think this gives it some urgency in terms of getting the funds, and it's pretty fair with 50% by the end of the year. So rooting for this.
So I'll speak briefly to it then, too. First of all, I want to say, great presentation. I think all of us really want the History Museum to happen. In fact, I know I voted to help the History Museum come into play now four, five, six times. You know, we supported the TDRs. I supported the money to fix the wall. I think I supported the money for the flooding. I think there's been some roof repairs. I mean, I literally feel that from the moment I got on council, that I've been told this is right around the corner. And so I actually feel this is really generous, to be honest. You know, what I heard you stand up and promise us, Mr. Green, is that by the end of this year, you will have raised $3.5 million. That's what I heard you say in your presentation. So I really hope you can raise half of that. And if you can't raise half of that, I think what we need to do, and I think Vice Mayor Niz is absolutely correct, we need to go out with an RFP and figure out how we can get this building rehabilitated. And that doesn't mean the idea of a History Museum is dead. It simply means, I mean, other people lease space for a History Museum, other people put that together, but I don't think we can just leave this building. You know, it's been there since 2000. That's 17 years. I don't think we can just leave it for another 10 years. And I think everyone would agree on that. It's not good for the building. It's not, it's an historical resource. I don't want to see it. And I think one of the interesting things that I think I might want to add to the motion, if we can talk a little bit about it, is this is my concern, is I don't know what that RFP looks like, and staff is going to need a little bit of guidance as to, I mean, there's many ways to do an RFP here. Is it an RFP out, how would you use the building? I think it's really an RFP in my mind of how to get the building rehabilitated, and what's the best way to get that done. And it may be, it may be for a nonprofit, it may be for a profit. I think, depending on the term of the lease, I think we have to understand how we actually get this building fixed up because we have limited resources. The city, you know, has already agreed, I don't have it in front of me, I guess it's, the city's already agreed to put in basically 4.3 million. That's about right, right? 4.3 million, which is a lot of money, frankly. And so I guess I was looking to staff, because it says an RFP, as to, you know, if the money's raised, that's not an issue, but if we're here in June, I guess I wanted to get a sense of when you're going to start needing to put that together if you're supposed to come with us to release an RFP. How long do you need to work on? Is it six months? Is it three months? You know, is it whatever?
Yeah, it would be a multi-month endeavor. We would need to work on finding the limitations that we would have within the use of the facility, so we would specifically call that out because people then would be able to respond. Over the years, the only inquiry we've had was from a realtor that wanted to see if the Palo Alto History Museum was not able to go forward, if the city would be interested in having a developer come in and put in a restaurant. So that's the only inquiry we've had. There's conditional use that we would have to, you know, study and make sure that we're cleared on, and prepare the package and put it out on the street.
So I guess what I would suggest, and I'll get to you in a second, is something along the lines of staff to stay in contact with the museum and, you know, follow the fundraising efforts and come to council, you know, if staff believes that it's necessary to come to council earlier than November with, to get parameters for an RFP, something along those lines. I am looking for you guys to sort of tell me what you want. Anyway, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Mayor, that, so my comment, the comment I want to make was along those lines, which is, you know, I don't think this is a straight go and develop an RFP. I think there's policy guidance we'll have to get from the council in advance of then subsequently developing the RFP. So the real question, I think, is, is it your goal to be essentially ready to hit the street with an RFP around November 2018, or, in which case, we definitely have got to come to you beforehand, or do you want to do this completely sequentially? You know, it's a different situation there. But it does seem to me that, I mean, if your idea is to give some momentum incentive to them, they've got to have enough time, but, you know, maybe at the nine-month mark, I mean, three months before November, the minimum, we've got to start looking.
Why don't we just have a check-in with council at that nine-month mark, and then we can make those decisions?
Six months.
At the six, why don't we have a check-in at the six-month mark? I would agree with that. So I will put E that staff have a check-in with council at the six-month mark. Is that acceptable to the maker and the secondor?
Can I ask if number D, there are three council members that are already part of this whole thing? Won't the council members be checking in with us?
They will.
I had just said that to Greg, but I think this is the staff part of it, and we're going to be, you know, hopefully having this auxiliary committee of three that will meet much more often with the board.
So yes, I mean, you could basically have that auxiliary committee ask staff to come back. We could do that. But I actually think it's probably a good idea for the entire council to have a check-in. I mean, it would be nice to say, yeah, it's going great, or no, it's not going great, or, you know, where things are.
Yeah, I'll accept.
I'd like to interject that, keep in mind that the zoning for the building is public facility at this point.
Yeah.
Zoning can be changed.
Yes. I think our point, let me just grab the mic for a minute. Our point is, long-term, to save the building. That's really our goal. And our concern at this point is, a building that's been unused for 18 years really has, there are parts of it that just are not sturdy any longer and that really do need, I mean, it needs some TLC at this point. And what we're saying is, we send every good wish to the committee, every good wish to the board, to raise the money. I think we're supporting this pretty much to the maximum we can. Greg has gone through many times that he has voted for this in the past, both as a board, but also again as, you know, giving authority to the city manager. So our concern is that the building is sitting there, we're heading toward 20 years of sitting there, and we really need to see some results for the fundraising.
Okay. Let's see, I now have a bunch of lights. Councilmember Walback.
I guess I'll add my take on what the goal here is. I really think that we have three priorities, and I'll list them in what I think is the appropriate order for this body to really be thinking about them. One is saving that building. Secondly is getting a History Museum that's actually open. And third is getting a History Museum in that rehabilitated building. I'd really like to see all three of those happen. I'm committed to making those happen. I think that it's time for some tough love to make sure we really push forward. I was thinking about how to do that, and I think that this motion probably heads the right direction. It's tough because, you know, I have a lot of respect for everything that's happened. I know a ton of work has gone in, and raising that kind of money is daunting, to say the least, but that's what it's going to take. And, you know, early on in this presentation, we saw the, what I think are the real numbers, which were not in the staff report, which is, this is $20 million ultimately. This is not just a couple million dollars. I did have some concerns about how the numbers were tallied up in the staff report and then the presentation. I just, I guess I should just say I have some questions. I want to make sure I'm clear. We have 2.88 million from TDRs plus 1 million from the BSR. That equals 3.88 million, right? Yep. Okay. And so I think it was mentioned earlier that that means, so the difference is really point, oh, and then. Interest earnings. We were also told that the city had contributed on page two, the staff report, packet page 247, says that the city was contributing 4.3. So, you know, 4.3 minus 3.88, what is that, .42 million? So where did the, where did that extra half, almost half million come from? Was that, that .42 million wasn't really called out?
It's interest, and there's about $350,000 in library impact fees for the historic archiving.
So $350,000?
Yeah, roughly about that number.
So, and what was it for again?
The archives.
Relocating the library system archives to the Palo Alto History Museum is kind of a policy decision a few years ago, so that provided a little bit of potential funding that we had for the relocation of the archives when we redid the Rinconada Library.
So $350,000 to move the archives.
Right.
Seems like an expensive.
Well, not just. Not just to move, to be able to house the archives at the museum.
Okay.
To pay for the rehab of the floor space.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm a little hesitant about spending, you know, a third of a million dollars of library impact fees on something that's not strictly library. So maybe you can put me at ease on this one.
Yeah, we've cleared it with our legal folks and our bonding, you know, not the bonding, the impact fee restrictions, and it is allowable. As you know, most of our libraries have been either renovated or brand new, so there's not a lot of other uses for the library system right now.
Maybe not right now, but.
But, no, no, the whole idea here was, was that we had most of the archives in the old main library downstairs, and then. in the old main library downstairs, and the design and the rehab of the facility, actually there was a better use for all of that program space than trying to make a place for this. So the whole idea was, hey, the Palo Alto History Museum could be a good location for this archives, for folks who would wanna go and do historical research and that sort of thing. It could ultimately be an asset to the museum in a way, more than, you know, keeping it housed in our libraries. That was the thinking, at least.
Got it. Okay, I think that, that helps put my mind at ease. I, I appreciate that. I, I, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll leave that bone alone. And then, during the presentation, there was a number of 5.7 million that was mentioned that has been raised so far. Can you break that down for me, where the, where that all came from?
So if you look at packet page four, I'll, I'll take a crack at it, and it's, it's the 4.3 on that, I'm looking at the budget table, phase one, 4.3 for the city contribution, 1.4 that the museum has raised.
Right, so you're basically, you're counting the city's contribution as part of your fundraising? Okay.
All right. When you're on it, didn't I hear a $9 million number bandied around?
Yeah, I, I.
So, phase one is a total of $9.2 million, 4.3 from the city so far, as a pledge, essentially, 1.4 million that the museum is identifying as pledges they have from elsewhere, and that leaves this gap of 3.5 million that the, you have targeted half of, that's the 9.2 million.
Right.
What, what is left unspoken, and I, it's more for transparency purposes or whatever than, or clarity, than it is for what the pricing is, because it, it sounds like the motion's intent, intention is to provide a very specific direction and incentive over the next year for the, for the museum to actually be able to use that as part of the argument, to go out to the public, to say that there's a clock ticking and we need to get that money. That being said, you know, the figures we're using, as I understand it right now, are construction cost estimates that are contemporary, they might even, I can't remember, be three or six months old. So we do have the question of what will the construction cost be a year from now or beyond, and it's just, I mean, we should just put that out there.
And that's what we've seen with all the other projects we've worked on, and, and others have too, is, the same thing with the GMZ, that costs went up, and they had to scale back their, their plans, and the scratch fees too, for now at least. So I guess, I'll just say, I will support the motion. I, I do look forward to council members working, you know, being assigned by the mayor, to work with the board, to help them figure out how to close that gap. Staff checking back in with council. In part, I think this is why, why those, you know, we really wanna have the check-in with the full council, in part, is to really talk about what that kind of, what an alternative might be, right? Does that mean that, you know, if the history museum's not ready to go, maybe for a while we lease it out to somebody else, and they do the fix-up, and we give them the discount on their lease for a while, and then we get a fixed-up building, and then when their lease expires, then the history museum can move in? You know, there's, oh, there's a lot of different ways we could go, I'm just kinda brainstorming here. But, I think that's why we, we do need to move on these, these two tracks. We need to, you know, start exploring what other options would be. But certainly, my preference is that the, the history museum, you know, is the first tenant that moves in there, and that we can make that happen.
Okay. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I, I think the motion's going in the right direction. I think the idea is to give you time to raise some funds. I think in your presentation, I heard you raised 9 million, and that included, can you, could you maybe come to the podium, if that's all right, and explain how much money you've raised?
Yeah, I can see where this is a bit confusing. Over the years, we've raised over $9 million. We've also spent money to keep ourselves alive. And that money, 700,000 of that was architectural fees, some of it goes to city permits and permitting fees. We've also had staff over the years. So we have spent over a million dollars already. That's gone. That's not money that we can use toward the rehabilitation of the Roth building. What that money did go through to is in preparation of that rehabilitation project. It's the Vance Brown contract, it's the architectural plans, and so on. So that, that money's already been spent, so.
And you've raised money for operations as well?
Yes.
Can you say how much you've raised? Do you know how much?
You mean, post-occupancy operations?
Yeah.
Over 2 million.
So you already have 2 million earmarked?
In the bank. Well, it's a pledge.
Okay. And, and do you have phases planned, like, what point do you begin building, and would you open operations in a phased way, or do you need to raise the entire 10 million operation funds before you would start?
Oh, no, we can start long before we've reached the $20 million goal. We will continue fundraising when the doors are open to this museum. So, we are looking at plans to get galleries and exhibits open. They may not be the galleries and exhibits of our dreams and programs, but it will be a fully functional, a functional museum that the community can start to appreciate. Community will have access to it. Community will have access to the archives up on the second floor. So we, we have a, I don't know if contingency is the right word, but we have a plan to, to have a doors-open museum before we have finished the complete funding for all of the exhibits, the virtual reality and all that stuff.
Okay. Yeah, and councilmember Walbach mentioned, like, the Junior Museum had a second phase, they had to cut back, so you guys could cut back.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then, a question about the TDRs that were already sold. So those were sold based on the history museum's plans, right? So we're saying that's a city contribution, but really, who, who has, who controls those TDRs, and what can they be used for?
Uh, they're already sold, so the funds you control.
Right, but they're sold based on the plans to use it as a, the, the.
The intent was to use it for the rehab of the, of the Roth building, yes.
So would, if there were new plans for the building, do those TDRs still apply, or do they have to be applied?
They still, they can still work depending on, you know, council direction.
So it doesn't have to be a public facility, or a museum, or?
As long as it's a, as long as it's a historical, I mean, they were, they were sold to be used for the Roth building. So basically, the city got the funds, and the purchaser got the right to the TDRs, and the funds will be used for the Roth building.
Right. But these, these specific TDRs are historical rehabilitation TDRs, right?
That's correct.
I mean, presuming we would insist on a proportionate historic renovation of the Roth building regardless of who is in there, but we will look at your question as to whether or not, if a non, in a sort of sense, not-for-profit or public-serving entity, whether it's still applicable.
Okay. And then somebody, one of the public speakers, speakers mentioned historical rehabilitation TDR funds left over from college terraces. What can that money be used for?
So, there was prior council authority to sell 2,500 square feet of TDRs for that, but the council, future councils were not interested in the staff moving forward, so we have not sold those.
Okay.
But we have the TDRs available that could be sold.
I see.
That's one part.
So it's not like there's money from TDRs already sold?
Actually, that was the second part. We, you may recall the Sea Scout TDRs? There was about $660,000 left on that, and that is cash on hands to be able to use for other historical facilities.
Okay, but it has to be a historical building.
Correct.
And then I'm curious, like, how, how long did the Sea Scout building take to, from beginning to end? And, and somebody mentioned the art museum, the Junior Museum.
It took a while, I would have to go back and look. I, I know it took some time, there were some challenges on that one, too.
And I know we were talking about 17 years, but the staff report says we started talking in the museum in like 2007, so is that more like 10 years?
We entered into the option agreement with Palo Alto Historical Museum in 2007, but the RFP was issued before that.
Okay.
Would be purchased the building in 2000.
Right. So there was a period of time before we knew what we were gonna do with the building, or between?
That's correct.
Okay. Still a long time, but not, not 17 years. And then, just this, so again, this under, when we say the city's contribution, I mean, we, in terms of money we actually used, we, we used a million dollars to shore up the wall, but we, the city hasn't incurred any, you know, the 4.3 million's not really money the city's incurred, that's TDR sales. And, when you say interest, is that interest earned?
Yes.
Okay.
So what you, the council directed us to do is to pull money from the Budget Civilization Reserve, a million dollars. So that's what we did, and set it aside.
So I guess, so wait, like, our hard, our hard costs, I guess we haven't really spent anything at this point?
Correct. We, we're holding the money until they convert the option to a lease itself. So once they raise the funds, and they, we get the satisfactory documentation on that, when we get to that point, then we can convert it to the lease, and then we would release the funds.
Okay, so that, that's all helpful to understand. So, I, I think it's, it was pretty interesting to see the plans and the, the presentation. Happy to hear Vance Brown is on board, it sounds like you have a contract with them. And also, I hadn't appreciated before the idea of the public bathroom. If I remember, like, the Sea Scout building, that was worth a couple hundred thousand dollars or something, right, to the city. And that café in the park also seems like a nice benefit, so I, I hope, hope we can pull this off. I'd like to propose a couple of friendly amendments, if, if the makers are listening. So I think, I think Larry Klein made some good points about a reasonable amount of time to, to, to raise money. So I would propose that we cha, change item A to be 2019 instead of 2018, to give them two years to raise the 1.75.
So Tom, I thought about that carefully, but I think that, that, it depends on how we look at money, but 1.75 seems like a reasonable amount to get to. That's half of what is needed to get to, to the next point.
Yep.
And, and while two years is certainly tempting, I'm, and maybe next year, it will be, if, if that doesn't happen, it'll go forward, you know, another year. But for now, I'm much more comfortable leaving it with a year.
Yeah. I, again, I think the idea of a goal's really good, I'm just not sure if 12 months is realistic. So I guess I'd make that an unfriendly amendment, if you're not gonna support it. Okay. So I, I have.
Do you wanna speak to your amendment?
Yeah, I have a second amendment after this. So, again, I just think the idea is really good, let's have an incentive, let's put a timeline on it. I just think it's a little bit arbitrary to say 12 months for 1.75 million. And again, they, really, it's been about 10 years, and some of these projects have taken a long time, and I do think they develop momentum as you raise more money. So that, that's just my thinking behind that.
Councilmember Holman, you might speak to your second. As to the amendment.
Yes, to the amendment. Yes, I agree with the thinking that Councilmember DuBois has put to this, and it further would help clarify C, because C and A seem to be operating separately here, so I think adding the two years to A would help rectify that to some extent.
You know, I'll speak against the, the amendment. Mr. Green stood up there and told us he's gonna raise 3.5 million dollars this year, and he's asked for a one-year extension. And, what we've come back and said is, well, you might be being a tad optimistic, you're forgiven for it, you're very enthusiastic. Show us you can raise half of that. You know, I think that's more than fair. And I actually have faith that Mr. Green will go ahead and raise that money. But, I think to say two years, and I realize, Tom, you know, I, I totally get it, we all want the history museum to happen, but literally, I have sat in meeting after meeting where this is supposed to move forward, and I just haven't seen the progress. And I, I think, you know, what I've heard is that we're gonna tie this to the 2019 quintessential, I, I can't say it. And if we're gonna tie it to that, and that's the driving force, and that's why this is gonna work this time, one year and 2018 is the way to go. Because if you go past that, then you're past, I don't know, I can't even say it, what is it? The quint.
Quincet.
Quincet.
Whatever that word is, true.
Yes, we all know what I mean. So, um, you know, I, I'm, yeah, so I'm gonna vote no. Does anyone else wanna speak to the amendment? Seeing no one, let's vote on the board on the amendment. And that fails on a, sorry, six to three vote, with council members, DuBois, Koo, and Fine voting yeah. Oh, Holman.
Let's be fine.
Yes. Five to three. Correct. I'm so used to six to three.
All right, so my second amendment would be a letter F, and it would be that, that the city, that we, the city would use the, the money from the Sea Scout TDRs for historical preservation as a challenge grant, matching donations for the next year. So, does that make sense?
How, how much is the Sea Scout TDR?
30,000.
665,000.
165,000?
6, 695.
695,000. Is that in addition to the 1.7?
It's 665,945, so about 665, that's what it is.
Okay.
Yep. And so the idea is that this is money that can only be used for historical preservation, and we would just put it up as a challenge, so no hard money.
So, it sounds good, let me just do, let me push back a little more. The money is where now? In our account somewhere?
Yes.
And this is what's left over from their selling their TDRs?
That's correct.
That we spoke of earlier? So the same kind of TDRs?
Correct.
Right. Tom, if you'd like to use them that way, I, I would agree with that. But tell me again how you wanna use that. They can, so in other words, we'll.
They have to get matching donations.
We'll put out a letter that says.
But it doesn't go to the 1.75. It's a, they have to raise 1.75, but they may match it.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's, let's see if we can word it correctly.
I guess you just add this, this amount will not count towards the 1.75.
Correct.
So I, I think that's actually a, a very generous and interesting offer, and this, this gives the board and staff an opportunity to work in two directions, one toward the 1.75, but also to get the, about two-thirds of a million put out there as a challenge grant.
Do you accept that, lady?
Okay.
I do accept it's a, it's a very good idea, and will help out getting them there sooner.
It's also another signal of sort of the city's support and incentive to the program.
Right. All right. Councilmember Holman, you're doing it.
Yeah, to, to the amendment, I think it needs a little bit of clarification, if I understood what the intention was. Instead of it saying on the second line, saying, this amount would not count, I think, because as I read it, it's not clear whether it's like, the 665 and the matching amount wouldn't count towards the 175. I think the intention is that the 665 would not count toward the.
That's correct.
Okay, so can we change the amendment then to say, the, the 665 would not count toward the 175, 1.75?
So.
Well, the 665 is separate, but the match will be applied.
Yes, exactly, that's what I'm trying to get clarified here.
The, the match will be applied to the 1.75 million. So if you met the challenge grant, then it's gonna be about a little over a million dollars additional that needed.
Right.
I think we're doing our very best to make, to make this work for the board, and to make it work for the staff. And I think at the same time, as I mentioned earlier, that there are carrots and sticks in this, and, you know, we hope that you will, you will find the carrot, because, because that, our whole goal is to make this happen. I mean, this is two blocks down the street, we'd love to see a history museum.
Okay. Councilmember Phil, say.
I just had a quick question. Are we, how much does it cost the city to main?
Okay. Councilmember Phil Sack.
I just had a quick question. Are we, how much does it cost the city to maintain the building every year? I mean, it must cost a little bit to, you know, fix the roof and stuff like that.
It's, off the top of our heads, we were trying to think about that. It was about $30,000 is what we believe it is.
Okay.
It's the external landscaping.
Got it. So it's really nominal?
Yeah.
Right. And is, I mean, is there, is there, depreciation's the wrong word, but, you know, the longer it goes on, you know, right? Right? I mean, it's going to, there's more stuff to fix and so forth. Do we have a, do we have a sense of what that is?
We have not done a, a review of that level.
Okay. But there aren't huge out-of-pocket costs towards having it sit empty?
No, there's been minima here and there.
Okay, thanks.
But to, to that, the building is not habitable as it currently sits.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Under F, can we, the city would use the Sea Scout TDR proceeds?
Proceeds, good. Put that in. I'm just going to assume everyone's good with that.
Thank you. That's what we were looking for.
All right, I see the light. Councilmember Koo.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm rereading this and number B directs staff to simultaneously develop options for RFP. I was wondering, number one, if that is legal? And then number two, if that might impede their progress in fundraising?
So, well, I, I thought that we sort of made it clear that the timing on when that work would begin would really follow both feedback from the subcommittee of the council advising on fundraising and then our six-month check-in. So I, I could definitely say we wouldn't be doing anything before the six-month check-in, and then we would be coming back to the council to see where we are and get further direction on whether we would actually proceed with that.
Okay.
So simultaneously would-
Yeah, I, that's the wording that I kind of was rereading and got concerned. But if that's what it's, the plan is, is to come back, then that's fine. All right.
So just briefly, I had a question. You guys said something that piqued my interest. You said there was 2,500 square feet of TDRs that could be sold from one of the libraries to be used for rehabilitation. One of the things that I would support, and I don't think we need to go in now, and I don't want it to be controversial right now, but I'll just tell you that I would support it, that if you raise the 1.75 million, then you're going to still have another 1.75 million to raise, at which point I would be fine with selling those TDRs as a challenge grant, just like we did with the Sea Scout stuff, which raises at least another million five as a challenge grant towards, which would cover the other three, the other million seven five you need to raise, which would get you there if you raised the other, if you doubled that raising. So I, I just thought we should, I wanted to throw that out there and let you know that if you can raise some of this money, I think you can get there. So.
We're sounding like a fundraising committee up here.
I want all of you on the team.
That's right, save some for the animal shelter. All right. Councilmember Holman, did you, did you put your light on again?
Yes, please. Did you want to add that last point to the motion?
You said you didn't, right?
Well, I, you know, I, what I'm thinking is, I, if you would support it, I'll support it, but let's, let's wait till June with the June check-in. Let's see how they're doing. You know, I, I don't mind adding it now. I just didn't want there to be. Do you want to do it now? All right. Do you want to do it now? You don't want to do it now?
Let's, let's see how it all comes-
Do you agree to wait? You think we should wait? All right, I, I'm fine to wait till June, but I mean, that's-
Yeah, we know it's out there.
You won't forget.
We know it's there.
We, we, we won't forget. These meetings are recorded. So the only reason I said like do it tonight is because, you know, time passes, we forget what we say and, you know, blah, blah, blah. So we'll have a record of it anyway. But actually, to your, to your point, though, about the six months, I was actually thinking that that six-month mark ought to be a nine-month mark. It's much more feasible.
I'm not saying they have to, I just think we should come back. We can always come, put it off, but let's come back in June and see what progress they've made.
So.
Yeah.
So can someone explain to me what D intends? There are two of us on this dais that are actually advisory board members, Vice Mayor Niss and I are advisory board members. But what is, what is the intention of D? What will the three city council members do?
I think they'll help-
Help with fundraising or just be-
I think they'll help with fundraising and give advice. I mean, I think they'll literally help with fundraising and give advice.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, that's good. And I think it's really important to clarify something. So, and I think it's really important, really important, to understand that the TDR monies are not city money. They are private monies that have been the result of the sale of the TDRs. But it's not city money. It is not city money. It's money that is sitting in our coffers, but the money came from property owners who bought the TDRs. So, and I think that's a really, really important distinction, and I'm hoping The Weekly will catch that. And it is further than that. It is, the TDRs, the TDRs are the result of the efforts of the museum and the investment of time and money from the museum or the Sea Scout, you know, entity or, you know, because that's how, that's how you get them. That's how you earn them. You have to develop plans that satisfy the, in the Roth Building's case, both the seismic and the rehabilitation criteria in order to earn them. That takes time and investment of, I think, I think Rich Green said, $700,000. So it's not, it's not that it was without the city's, that, excuse me, without the museum's efforts and financial investment, both. I do, I understand what the intention is. I think about B, which is to simultaneously, simultaneously develop options for an RFP. I do wonder, and I think Councilmember Koo asked this, if that might interfere with the fundraising capabilities of the museum, because it seems to indicate a lack of commitment on the city's part to the museum. So I, I worry about that. I mean, I'm, I'm not the fundraising expert, but I worry about that being mixed signals.
So Councilmember Holman, the whole goal of this, as I said, was carrots and sticks. And if there's no urgency in this, looking back at the fundraising efforts over the last 10 years, if there's not urgency in this, for them to use as well, for, for Rich and Laura to go out and say, you know, we're under the gun. We have to raise this amount of money. It has to be delivered by a certain date, and, and, and that's how you'll make a difference. I don't know how else we can literally put a fire under this group to, to raise the money that we want them to raise. We're saying, how else can we make it easier for you? So we've talked about the Sea Scout proceeds. We're talking now about TDRs that might come to, you know, might come to fruition in June. I, I think, I think we are really working hard to make this work.
And I appreciate, a lot has been said, a lot has been said that really is in support of the museum, and I really appreciate that. I think, well, we had everybody here who spoke talked about what a good project it is. I guess I, that's, we do have the lease option stick, if you will. And so, like I say, I'm, I'm a little concerned about B being a mixed signal that the community is going to read. So I'm, I'm not the fundraising expert, but I see, I see Rich is nodding his head. Through the chair, could I ask, or through the mirror, could I ask museum folks to comment on? Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, this would be a confusing message to the donor community. We are in this together. We are both trying to raise money to rehabilitate a city-owned building so that it can be occupied. This is not money to build a museum that we're talking about. $9.2 million has nothing to do with our museum. It has everything to do with making that building occupiable. We have invested donor money in the architectural plans and the staff, the permitting, and a lot of hard work to get to this point. We're helping you. We're trying to get this building rehabilitated so that it can be occupied by anybody. The intent is for it to be occupied by a history museum, and we are very far down that path. So please be clear that the money we're talking about here doesn't build a museum. It makes that building occupiable.
Yeah, we understand that.
Okay. If the donor community feels that the city council may not keep their commitment to this building for its use as a history museum, this will cause us some concern.
So I, I think that's clearly not the intent. I think what we're being really clear to the donor community here is, is we want this to go forward as a history museum. We want this to go forward and be rehabilitated, but if you don't raise the 1,750, by November 30th, we are going out and looking for other uses, other ways to get the building rehabilitated. I mean, I think it's really very clear.
I could ask a question a different way. If the clock starts ticking in November 2018, I think that makes sense. I have no problem with that. But if the clock starts ticking in terms of the request for proposal going out before that, and we've talked about six months and nine months-
It doesn't go out before that.
It waits until November?
It does not go out before November.
Okay, so it's not like you're shopping for a new wife while you were going through marital, marital counseling? Okay. Thank you for the clarification. My husband's in the audience, and he's very happy to hear that.
So does that mean that you're less concerned about it than?
I think we can make this work.
You need, you need to be on the mic. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If the clock doesn't start ticking until November 18 upon proving that we have met certain goals, that makes sense to me, the one year.
Okay, so you don't have the same concerns I did? Okay. All right, good.
I appreciate all of your concerns and the help you're offering, though. Thank you. You've all put a lot of thought into this.
Thank you. With, with that, I will be able to support the motion and appreciate all the efforts and, and concerns. Thanks.
All right, let's vote on the board. Vote, you want, you didn't want? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Fine absent. Thank you very much for your efforts and for coming today.
Lydia, thanks for your second.
I, I appreciated that, Louis.
All right. I think we are now at council member questions, comments, but just want to check. Yes. Councilmember questions, comments? I see no lights.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad. So the meeting's adjourned. Have a good-